Friends, I'm calling to order the March 11th, 2025 Selenary Schools Board of Education meeting. So, standing as you are able, we're going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to ask a random member of the audience, Carly Malconian, is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Ready, Carly?
To the flag, the United States of America, and to be ruled, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the end of justice for all.
Thank you, Carly. Well done. Good job. Public comment, please. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note, the students will get priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting is limited to 30 minutes normally and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. And we have nothing from students? And we have nothing from other public stakeholders? I did not think that would trip me up. Nothing from other public stakeholders? However, we do have an extended public comment. I'd like to introduce you to Daisy Sharman and Kelly Van... You're up? Kelly Van Ween? Ben Single, sorry, Ben.
Make sure it's on, Daisy. Oh, there we go. There we go.
And we're going to aim for about 10 minutes at the max.
Max. Oh, yeah. It's not going to be that long.
Thank you.
Very brief.
I am Kelly Van Single, and this is Daisy Sharman. And we're here on behalf of the... We're here on behalf of the Special Education Advisory Committee in Selenary Schools. And just a little bit of a background on the next slide, please, Ben. Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Education requires that each intermediate school district develop a parent advisory committee. And we do have that at the ISD level. There are two of our committee members that serve on the WISD Parent Advisory Committee, myself, I am an at-large rep, and our two reps for Selen are Daisy Sharman and Tara. And some local districts also have their own parent advisory committees as well to serve those larger groups. Ann Arbor is one such, and we are as well. And I believe Mylan is looking into developing their own group as well. Do you want to read your...
The Special Education Advisory Committee is to support, advise, and recommend the processes and standards for delivery of special education and services for Selenary Schools. The committee is made up of parents, staff, and administrators committed to the pursuit of excellence throughout Selenary Schools. Members represent a cross-section of the Selenary Schools from pre-K to young adult, respecting the and embracing different viewpoints. Membership is done through an application and selection process, and terms are for two years.
And so, we have some of our CAC members here in attendance tonight. They're standing right behind me. But on the board, you can see we have representation at all different age levels and building And some of the things that we've been working on this school year, both last spring and this fall, we had some playground meetups at Pleasant Ridge, just for families to get together and have a chance to meet each other, support each other, build community. We've also expanded that into middle school and high school and young adult socialization activities. Last Friday, we had an open bowling and pizza day at Station 300. We also brought in a professional by the name of Sean Roy recently, who led us in a Zoom professional development series on preparing for transition to adulthood. That was excellent. We shared out his materials to families and staff. We've also held a series of parent and caregiver evening coffee chats here at Liberty. We're also looking at developing a fundraising subcommittee to maybe fund things like technology enhancements or some music enrichment experiences. And we've also been working lately with the DEIAC and participating in the superintendent search. And that's basically it. Thank you very much.
Well done. Thank you for that update. We'll see you here same time next year.
Sounds good.
Caught me by surprise. Revisions approval of the agenda. This is the part where we add or delete from the agenda, and the order can be changed at the request of any individual board member. Now, two pieces of information came up to me just within the last two hours or so, so I need to make two amendments. Number, the first is, if you would do me a favor and add seven E, please. Seven E, please. We're going to renumber the seven F because a person, Miranda, didn't know there was an F already. So, we're going to include that. It's the motion to approve the purchase of HVAC equipment. We'll go over that later. She apologizes. We do have a lot of information, and she will catch you up on why it came up and why it's so helpful to do this right now. Secondly, I'd also, because I was in negotiations with our contractor, Scott Robertson, I've got some additional information just this morning that I can now share with the board. So, I'd like to add a nine D under athletic review, please. I think it's nine D. Let me just triple-check. Yep. Nine D under discussion items right after superintendent search Jay Bennett. Mr. Bennett, wherever he is. No, he's floating. Oh, there he is. Thank you. Are there any other changes from the rest of the board? No? Students? No. You didn't know you had that power, did you? Thank you. Thank you very much. I have no response. So, to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
So moved, Gerbi.
Gerbi, seconded?
Second, Tizides.
Thank you. Mr. Tizides, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you very much for letting me modify the agenda. Students, would you introduce your showcase, please?
For this week's student showcase, we have students from the Selen High School AP Spanish, and they will talk about their recent trip to Costa Rica.
I'm Azquel Lacy, one of the Spanish teacher at Selen High School, and here with wonderful people. We just came back from the province of Alajuela in Costa Rica. We immerse our kids in the culture. Each one of them live with hot families, so they spend the day with us, but at night they went to eat dinner with the family and interact with them. They learn a lot. In the morning, when we picked them up, they were super tired, but good, a smile on their faces, and seeing them enjoying the trip, it was amazing. My heart was, our hearts were, full of joy. So, and we came here to say thank you to all of you who approved this wonderful trip, to allow us to go and enjoy this experience with them. There were 24 kids that went with us. We have three wonderful chaperones in addition. And thank you so much for approving other two Spanish teacher to come. When we immerse the kids in the culture, it's very important that our chaperon is able to speak the language, because many things can go wrong with the families. And some days, we were eating dinner, and one of them was calling us, and suddenly the phone handed to us, in Espanol. So, thank you so much for allowing three of us. This was something that we want to do as a department. I had this experience in Nicaragua many years ago, and Prof. Manek had in Spain, Señora Gregones and Señora Sentimané had in Mexico, and we always have had the goal to take our kids and immerse them in the culture. So, thank you so much for that. Here, I have two wonderful students that are going to give you all the details about the trip. Thank you.
All right. Hi, my name's Ethan Hornberger. I'm a senior at Selen.
Hi, I'm Lizzie White. I'm a junior at Selen. I'm currently in AP Spanish. Ethan took it last year. So, basically, we're going to go through each day and kind of explain what we did and kind of the experiences we had and what we learned. And at the end, we'll talk more about the home stays and the learning experience. But first, we'll just kind of go through the itinerary. So, on day one, we took a tour of a pineapple plantation in the morning. And if you don't know, fun fact, Costa Rica is the number-one producer for pineapples worldwide, so it's a super big part of their culture. So, being able to be there, getting a tour, was a very cool experience. Also, this tour and every single tour we took there, which were several, were entirely in Spanish. So, that was a super good experience, too, for improving our language skills. We also got to try some pineapple there, and personally, it's much better there than it is here. So, I can tell you that for sure. Furthermore, in the afternoon, we went whitewater rafting on the Lake of Pozo Azul. That was also incredible. I've been whitewater rafting before, and I'm fortunate to say that it's the best experience. It was awesome, super great, and everyone had so much fun. There's a picture of us all there, holding Costa Rican flag, and you can see some pictures of us all whitewater rafting. Very fun. So, that was an awesome experience, and I think the whitewater rafting was fun, and it had a really good balance of learning at the plantation, because we got to practice understanding and interpreting the language while also being immersed in their culture.
All right. For day two, we visited the school in Alajuela, which is the city we were staying in the whole time. We also got to... The school is called Escola Holanda, and we... We got to experience the city as well of Alajuela. So, we first stopped in the bottom right. You can see a picture. We stopped at, it was like a gardening store nearby. We got to personally pick out all of the plants and flowers we wanted to bring with us to the school, and we got to go and plant them at the school. It was a great experience working with younger kids. It was an elementary school. We got to not only talk to them in sort of the lower-level Spanish that we all experience in Spanish I and II and III, but also we got to just have a great time. And we, then, after that, we walked around. We got to experience the city life firsthand. And seeing city life, I guess, just, it was a great comparison between here where we live and Costa Rica. And it was sort of the connecting point for a lot of us between like, wow, we're really in another country. And, yeah.
This is just a slide with more pictures from that day. We did a lot. It was awesome talking to all the kids. Again, they don't speak English, so all this communication entirely in Spanish, a great way to practice our skills. And we saw a lot of cool things, too, like that peacock. So, day three was also super cool. We went ziplining in the morning over volcano Arinal, and then in the afternoon, we went to the Baldi Hot Springs, which were also on by the volcano. So, those are some pictures. It was very beautiful, super amazing experience. Again, instructions for this, everything Spanish. And also, an amazing gorgeous view that just kind of showed us... We got to see all parts of Costa Rica while we were there. We traveled up and down. We had to go four hours to get to this volcano in a bus, all together, 24 students. It was a lot. But it was definitely worth it, and there's just nothing like it. So, it was super amazing to be able to see just like all parts, because we were driving all over. We saw all different socioeconomic classes and just a complete range of things that was an experience like no other.
So, for day five, we went to a coffee plantation and got to see firsthand the production and how they, I guess, from step by step of how coffee's made. So, we got a tour by one of the tour guides, again, completely in Spanish, and we saw every single step of the process to see how it was made. And then, we even got to try the coffee at the end. And it was interesting seeing the, again, how Lizzie mentioned, the different kind of positions people are in, all in other countries. And we got to see how... We got to see how the coffee was made and what it's like for life of those in other countries. I guess, we talk about a lot in class, people all around the world, a lot of landmarks all around the world, but to see it firsthand is a completely different experience. We later went to La Paz Waterfalls, and we got to see all different types of animals. So, I guess, it's only animals that we really see in zoos here, whereas in Costa Rica, there's no zoos at all. They are focusing on kind of like wildlife and rainforest reconstruction. So, all of these animals are in... They're in a slight but temporary type of captivity. So, we got to see all of these animals, but it was interesting learning about all of the rebuilding processes and all the kind of reconstruction and rehabilitation of all these different types of animals, just firsthand. Yeah.
Again, this is just a slide of more pictures. We brought the SAS compass all the way to La Paz Waterfalls in Costa Rica, and we got to be up close, right next to some of these animals. And then, some of them were, again, in like temporary confinement, and it was just a super cool experience. So, day four, we went to the Menwell Antonio National Park in Costa Rica, another long drive, again, entirely worth it. It was gorgeous. I've never been, and more refreshing water, never been on a more relaxing beach. It was awesome. And that's all of us there. We also did a nature walk there to see kind of, again, like the culture, what it looks like there. We've been to national parks here, but it's a completely different story there. So, it was super cool to be able to compare the two and experience both.
And then, our final full day, we stayed at El Rancho, which is where the teachers had been staying during the week, and we got to just have a kind of chill pool day after traveling so much around the country. But we also took a cooking class and a dancing class with some of the instructors that they had there. The cooking class in the bottom left and top right, you can see, we were cooking with plantains and lots of just ingredients that are only found in Costa Rica or only, just wouldn't be common to us here. We got the experience of cooking our own food and kind of saw how that was happening for us the entire time we were there. And then, we also got to have a dancing class and learn some of the, I think it was six types of dance there. So, it was a little out of most people's comfort zone, but I think everyone enjoyed doing it in the end. Yeah.
So, the home stays were a huge, huge part of this trip and the experience altogether. And I loved it. Everyone loved it. It was super great, because, again, communication entirely in Spanish, and they're cooking meals for you. They're doing everything for you. You're staying in their home. You have to communicate, so it forces you and it immerses you, and it... There's really no other way to advance your language other than to be in a situation like that. There are a lot of people, cash registers there, that, you know, like spoke English, but our home stays didn't at all, for the most part. And everyone loved theirs. They were all different, which was a really big and important and cool part of it. The homes were different. The socioeconomic classes were different. They were all kind of higher, because they had to meet certain requirements to be able to house us, but within that, there was a range. So, we got to experience and live in Costa Rican culture. My home stay mom, for example, I still talk to her. I WhatsApp her every single day. She might be coming to the United States next year, and my house, we're planning on having lunch with her. Like, we had a great time. We're still in contact with them. She texts us every day about all her animals. So, it was a super great experience, and the texts all in Spanish. Also, the food there. They cooked food for us every single breakfast and almost every single dinner, and we had conversations with them. My home stay, for example, we were talking for almost like two hours every single night at dinner, entirely in Spanish. We were explaining the AP exam to her, and she was giving us like tips, like comparing Costa Rica and the United States quick, because ours was this teacher, so she kind of understood that aspect. And there is a variety of meals that each house got, but for the most part, I could say that there's a lot of plantains, beans, and rice, and chicken. So, that was good. But awesome, super great experience. My host mom, Yaha, amazing cook, so props to her. Ethan and I, too, we had very different home stays. Mine was just, you know, mom, her husband, and then her daughter was in university. And Ethan had an array of people, so I'll let him talk about that.
All right. Right before we got there, we kept asking Señora Lacy, like, who's going to be in our house? Who are we going to be with? And the travel company kind of gave us like a rough outline of who would be there. We knew the parents would be there, and likely, there would be some kids. We got there, and I had... There was a son who's the same age as me, another son who's in middle school, and another daughter who was higher elementary grade. But there were all types of neighbors and all types of almost connections that we don't see here, people who would be considered family just because they live so close and are over every single day for dinner, for meals, for all things like that. And there were these, I guess, just people consistently coming into the house who were just so nice to meet, and we got to meet like people of all different walks of life. Circling back around to the food in my house, the grandma was over every single day, and although she didn't live there, she basically lived there 24/7. And she was always cooking for us and asking what we wanted, and we were like, whatever you're having, we'll have. And there were all types of food that even learning about in class, we'll learn about kind of just one type of food from each country, but here, we got to see all different types of, all different types of meals come together. And for the first few days, we had to kind of use Google Translate and be like, what does that word mean? But even sometimes, that would deceive us. Down in the middle, it looks like a tortilla with a type of sauce, and then there was a cup of coffee there. I will say, the coffee was the best I've ever had in my life, because it was just homemade there in Costa Rica. And the... I assume that would have been a tortilla, but they used a word chorado, and it was made of corn, and it was a lot sweeter, and I just, I would have never known. And when we Google translated the word for the type of sauce on it, natia, originally, we were like, we thought they were going to give us Nutella. And we translated it, and it translated to custard, so we then thought, oh, well, it's going to be what's in a donut. But we tried it, and it was, I would say, closer to sour cream. So, I guess, it was those firsthand experiences of going there that we got to learn exactly all those intricate parts of life. Yeah.
And so, most of this was kind of incorporated from the home stays, but it was like the entire trip. We learned so many different things. So, one big thing that really surprised us is here, like, in the United States, everywhere basically, the saying, like, how cool or that's cool would be, que chava, right? I feel like that's like really basic Spanish. So, we went in there, we were saying that all the time. That's not how they say it in Costa Rica. Every time we said it, like, I feel like we kind of got like a little stare, like, they understood it, but it's kind of like speaking Australian English in America, like, it's different. And we learned that it's actually que chiva there. So, that was super cool. We kind of got to experience how like Spanish changes in each country. It's not just black and white. There's a gray area, and that was cool. Another saying was, con mucho gusto, which mucho gusto, we're taught, it means nice to meet you, and it does. But when you say con mucho gusto, it means, you know, like with pleasure, like you're welcome. And so many other things like that. Those are just two examples right off the bat. And again, so many new foods, like Ethan was completely deceived. It was not at all what he thought it was, but I think he still enjoyed it. He had it for breakfast every morning. And there are so many different types of foods, because you hear, you know, like I said, beans, rice, chicken, plantains, but it's different. Every place that cooks is different. In the United States, I would never touch beans. I hate beans. Costa Rica, love them. They're just different. And cultural experiences, like, I couldn't even, when we were making these slides, I couldn't even like put it into words. You just have to be there. You have to experience it. Nobody, if you're in AP Spanish, it's kind of, you know, given that you're trying to become fluent in the language, which is difficult, and really, the only way to do that is to be immersed in it. So, if you speak it at home in the United States, huge leg up. The majority of us do not. So, experiences like these early on in your Spanish development before you get to college are huge, and there's really nothing else like it. We thank you so, so much for approving this, because this was truly, I travel a lot, honestly, and there was nothing like this that I've ever done. It was a completely different experience, and it was so, so amazing, and there was nothing else like it. And I hope, even after Ethan graduates, after I graduate, that this trip runs on with new Spanish teachers coming and going. I hope it runs on, even if it's not to Costa Rica. Being immersed in this language, it's a completely different... It's a leg up in the game, especially, like, we have people that are taking AP Spanish or have taken AP Spanish that are planning on majoring in that language, so, like, in college. So, this experience was invaluable to them, and I'll let Ethan talk about the rest of the slide.
So, the pictures that we have towards the middle of the slide, those were with the grandma of the household, and, oh, it was on the last one. I apologize. The... I think, yeah, there we go. We got to experience how to cook. We, I know, we took the cooking class and the dancing class at the end of the week, but this was towards the middle of the week. Beau was one of the other boys I was staying with. He is in the middle. The abuela was teaching us how to dance. And then, there's a picture of me learning how to cook. And I will say, I thought my cooking skills were good, but they were not, they were not up to par.
So, that's all you have, but, or that's all we have. Thank you so much for having us here and also for approving this trip, like I said, an invaluable experience, and we thank you and appreciate you so much for allowing us to do this.
Before you... Thank you. Yay. Before you sit down, I wonder, I wonder if my board colleagues have a question or two, quick question to ask you, because I do have one.
You two are adorable, and I know your families are good friends, and I took a picture from the board table, and I'll send it to you later. I wish we could do so many more of these trips, because I wholeheartedly agree that these types of experience, especially informative language years, are so incredibly important, and I'm so pleased that you could go on this and the other 22 students that went with you and teachers. So, I would love if our high school could put forth more ideas for these, for other children in the future. Sorry, you guys are seniors, other students. Thanks.
Maestra. Hay una pregunta para ti. Next year, will you please invite the board?
Are you going to approve it?
No problema. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you for all the parents that trust us in this journey. And I forgot to mention, Mr. Warren was the parent chaperon that joined us, too, so that was super fun, and we learned a lot from him, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's all about the custard. It's all about the custard. Thank you so much. I'm going to have to look up Alajuela later. We have several action items, please. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the proposed 2024-25 general fund budget amendment as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Ausley. We looked at it last week and reviewed it over the week. If you haven't, first of all, let's hear the motion. So moved. Is it Tim Austin?
Ben, I'll second it.
Thank you. Austin and Gerbi. Do we have any questions or discussion points to ask Miranda? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Hear no opposition. 7-0. Thank you very much. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the 25-26 School of Choice Guidelines as recommended by Superintendent Lott last week.
So moved. Stubborn.
Thank you.
Second, Tizides.
Any discussion? Any comments, questions, queries, quibbles? Nope? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. 7-0. Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion that, well, could do an easy one first. I'd like to entertain a motion that the Board of Education designate the superintendent to be the determining fact- I'd like to entertain a motion, uh, that the Board of Education designate the superintendent to be the determining factor of assault. As submitted by Carol Abaki Diglio, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. She's prepared to come up once the motion is made. By making the motion, it doesn't mean you approve it. It just means you put it on the floor for discussion.
So moved, Stabin, so we can have that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second gold.
Thank you. Carol. Ms. Diglio, looking forward to you clarifying the language. Thank you.
The language that was, um, presented last week or two weeks ago was as exactly written in my response grievance to the SEA. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but that was in written response.
All right.
And then there was, go ahead. I'll answer any questions the best I can.
Uh, Dr. Lott may have a comment or two to make.
Right, and we can, we can go through, uh, questions, but in essence, the, um, there was a grievance that, that we've been working on for quite some time now. And as a result, um, Carol put together a district response that more or less, well, it's a, uh, Dr. Lott is working with a Board of Education President, uh, Michael McVeigh, to confirm the designation of the superintendent to be the determining factor of assault. The projected date to have this fully resolved is February 25th, 2025. And then after, um, Ms. Diglio submitted that to the, um, SEA, there was a response that confirmed that, per the conversation with myself and Carol, we would like to clarify that the process by which the physically aggressive student returns to the classroom shall be included in the annual training in August. With that assurance, the SEA considers grievance 24 dot 25 dot one settled. So at that point, we brought, um, or President McVeigh had it on the agenda to state that, you know, if in this case, the board were to designate the superintendent to be the determining factor of assault, that was just part of the agreement to settle the grievance. And then when we came to the meeting, there was discussion. And then there was a follow-up email sent to the board that suggested the board could then, you know, create a ad hoc committee, for example, to be the group that actually, um, determines whether a student assault, which primarily might be a student kicking, hitting, doing something of that nature, that the board could take on that responsibility. And so what, what I was stating is the grievance has been resolved. And then there was an oppo, there would have been an opportunity for the SEA to come back and say, no, the grievance hasn't been resolved because we want the board to consider an ad hoc committee. That came after the fact. So I just want to point out. And, and so now we're at a point where the, the board is deciding on how they want to proceed. If, um, a potential student assault were ever to be brought to either myself, in this case, as superintendent, or the board. And that's ultimately where we're at right now.
Right, and, and it's important to note that it is about intent, the intention and who declares that. Um, one thing I want to say is that just kind of doing some deep diving, the Lansing EA versus Lansing School District really went to court in 2007 and that's what the SEA cites. That law, the M L, the MCL 381311A1, which is cited, was revised in 2017. So that's case law from 2007 that was decided on in 2009 and it was revised in 2017. We are living in 2025. So I think it's, some case law does set precedents and it is, but there's been a lot of that. And that law is specific to if you have a determined assault, it should go to the board or the superintendent or the principal. And there's multiple layers of that. And it clearly says that there, um, it is a joint decision when it is declared assault. In this case, if we went to the original grievance that was written back in September with many iterations back and forth of trying to resolve this, there were four points that the association was asking for. And one of it was request that the district develops plans around the acts of physical assaults. And we did that immediately back in September. We revised how we manage injuries. Uh, Dr. Lott started, um, listing those injuries of any type, whether it was through a student injury or an injury on the building and alerting the board at any time, which you should be alerted when there is an assault in the district. Um, the second thing they're asking for was consistent protocols across the district and training in a concise matter. That we're working on, um, in our, um, most recent, um, professional development. Um, Kara's office had trainers in, um, that was directing that. And we're working on getting the restorative practices in place for consistency across the pre-K 26 board. And then the, um, third thing they asked was, uh, a voice in decision-making. We spent the last year at the table with them, talking and, um, in various ways of making sure that we are doing our due diligence on behalf of all staff members. And then the fourth thing was to make sure the employee that was cited in the original grievance received their sick days back and that is automatic anyways. So when you look at the original grievance from September and how it has evolved to today, I feel like, um, there's been a lot of great work together and getting to a point where we, um, make sure that we spend the next year, the rest of this year and next year, and the years following, to do what's in the best interest of the SEA and all of our staff members, our ESP, our SEA, our administrators. And this one point that is kind of holding things up and it has been confusing as it, it seems like a bit of a, a moving target at times. When we go back to the original grievance, we have met that grievance many times over. It's one sticking point that I think at the building level and as Steve explained, there are teams of people, including SEA members, that are, that have a voice in this. Um, and there are many things, including the MDE seven factors, Myers and IDEA, federal and state laws that we have to abide by. So if, if, if I can answer anything else, I'm, I'm happy to do so.
We'll start with Vice President Stabin.
Thanks Carol and Steve too, um, because either one of you can answer it. I just have a few clarifying questions to help understand before we have discussion. Um, so last time we did talk a lot about intentionality versus the definition of assault. And the way that the motion is, um, is read and the reason I initially paused at it is because it said, be the determining factor of assault. Should that word be intentionality or should it be assault in, in our motion? Because aren't we saying who the designee or, or if the board is the final decision maker is on the, um, definition of intentionality? Not, not assault because that's the law.
Right, and I, I believe that's what was brought up after the fact. But again, I was leaning into the February 11th document that is in writing and I was trying to honor what was being asked. And that was what was in writing. I think when, um, Brandon came back up here with me two weeks ago, um, we were asked to work together on that and he bypassed that option to work together on that.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
And, and to that point, uh, trustee Stabin, the, um, we were also citing that the intentionality definition, we were trying to take from MCL 380 dot 1311A12B, where it says physical assault against employee, volunteer or contractor. Quote, "Physical assault means intentionally causing or attempting to cause physical harm to another through force or violence." And that, um, what I was stating is that I feel, in this case, when I say the term I, the superintendent and the superintendent's designees, which may include administrators, an IEP team, other teachers, that if they got together to have a manifestation hearing, which is largely where you look at the seven factors that, um, Carol mentioned earlier, that that team is very capable of determining that intentionality part or, or not. And that I believe that they're better equipped to do that than potentially the board. Now, the other part of this is, um, there are many, many instances, hundreds, within the policy manual that says things like, the board shall carry out this function, the board shall do this. And it really does insinuate that the board's staff do that, the superintendent. There, there are many instances. And so I mean, I'll just give you an example, cause I did a search.
So I'm sorry, can I just pause you because I, I had a couple other qualifying questions. And this kind of gets into a, a slightly different area, but I would love to talk about that too. Um, so don't forget, cause I want to come back to that. Um, so I was just asking about the word of assault versus intentionality and the action, just so whatever we decide, it's clear what's being decided. Um, and then there was something in the document that, that Steve sent over to us today. So, um, and this is, um, per the conversation with myself and Carol just now, 218, we would like to clarify that the process by which the physically aggressive student returns to the classroom shall be included in the annual training in August. With that assurance, the SEA considers grievance 24 point 25 point one settled. So my question is, is this settled yes or no?
Yep, it has been settled, except for things are in working. So that one piece that we're here tonight about, um, was taken exactly from the February, February 11th response to the grievance, to their previous agreements. And it really was the effort of the board saying, hey, come back together and see if we can get that clarified. Steve directed myself and an SEA member. I reached out to that SEA member and that SEA member bypassed both of us. So that was our, our chance to, between tho, that week and now, to come up with more clarifying. But I took the language exactly as is. And I think Jennifer, that yes, there is that piece that they said intention, the intentional piece of it. Um, I, I just, you know, I, I think that you want to make sure that there are, there, there's lots of things on a daily basis that we have to make decisions about on behalf of the board. Not in, not in place of the board, but in, in the act of things, we have to work together. And if there's, there is something in, that does occur, Steve is, and I would imagine the next superintendent reports as they do weekly to you. That's a really important piece of it, is that that has been implemented along with lots of other things, um, this year, um, on behalf of all of our employees. We just, we do want it as safe as possible.
Yeah, I, I guess the reason I asked, and then I can, um, defer to Steve to, to finish that, that, that follow-up thought, is in that letter from the SEA, it talks about the physically, um, aggressive student returning to the classroom. And to me, that's different than, um, determining a factor of assault or determining intentionality, like.
What letter are you talking about, John?
So it's that one that says, per the conversation with myself and Carol just now, we would like to clarify that the process by which the physically aggressive student returns to the classroom shall be included in the annual training in August. So that seems kind of cut and dry. And then I look at this motion, this seems a little cut and dry. There's this conversation around the word assault or the word intentionality, but I see these as two separate things. So I'm just, I guess my follow-up question is, how are they connected?
Go ahead.
I, I'd like to address that in that. They're actually not. In other words, um, Carol sent a response that said, Dr. Lott is working with President McVeigh to confirm the designation of superintendent to be the fact, determining factor of assault. And at that point, the SEA did have an opportunity to come back and say, no, that's not, that's not what was said. Instead, the follow-up email was, per the conversation with myself and Carol just now, we'd like to clarify that the process by which the physically aggressive student returns to the classroom shall be included in the annual training in August, which was agreed upon. And then it says, with that assurance, the SEA considers grievance 24 dot 25 dot one settled. And my point around that is, if the SEA did not want the grievance settled with the language that Carol provided, then they had an opportunity to state that right there and then and, and chose not to. Instead, it was sent as a follow-up email to the board after the last meeting. So those aren't connected per se.
Thank you.
I think the qualifying questions are over, or the clarifying questions are over.
I want to make sure I give everybody a chance to offer questions before I, so I great.
Wait, sorry, I did have questions.
Then ask it and then I'll.
Um, so one part of the language that's confusing to me is it seemed like, and I could be wrong. So it seems like the victimized teacher, parent or whatever, would have, and the administrator would first have to disagree on how it was being, like it seemed like the superintendent would be sort of the next level up after you already had that meeting with the IEP team and the, so these are sort of in circumstances where, I just want to clarify that I'm right about this. These are circumstances where there's disagreement between that administrative team, including potentially the IEP folks and the teacher who was the victim of the incident. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, that, that is correct.
So it's not indeed every time a teacher is assaulted, it's if there's some disagreement as to how to characterize the assault versus the intent.
Right, you're correct. And I have had that happen zero times.
So I guess, well, then it gets into comments because that's, that's really my question is that we're, we're, we're in a situation where we're looking for recourse when there's disagreement. Okay.
Treasure, Gerby.
So I, I have a lot of thoughts and I apologize for, for them, uh, for the, I'll try to get to it just because I can. First of all, I want to make it very clear, I agree empowering the superintendent wherever we can is, is a good idea, okay? In general, I want him to feel like he is an empowered human. Um, there, from my viewpoint, I said I was gonna talk to both sides at the last meeting. There is, I, I, I guess I want to say, there is not agreement on intentionality and what would, like, this is about if they disagree, okay, and the process that would happen. And I would argue that the EA from some of, I'll, I'll explain in a second why I believe this. I believe the EA would say that the return to class and the intentionality are indeed kind of together. And, and here's how I would say that. So the superintendent, okay, I, he has said that he, in his viewpoint, has, has made this determination zero times outside of this grievance. But he has a designee who oftentimes makes those things on his behalf, right? And that a lot of times these are, let's be honest, special education students and things of that nature where that falls under the purview of the special ed director. And she is a qualified and really awesome human and all that, and I'm sure she gives due diligence to that. But there is not always a conversation that happens with the individual about what's gonna happen, how that student's gonna be returned. What is the restorative practice? The, the staff member is not necessarily always involved in those conversations of determining intentionality. And so like, for me, I agree with the EA when the EA says that the EA wants to be involved in those conversations. And furthermore, I, I think anytime that an employee who works for us, anytime, whether it's an IEP student, whether it's a, not an IEP student, that employee is important to us. And so from my standpoint, I think there should be a problem-solving conversation or some type of collaborative process, especially if you have a teacher or an employee, and this is hard for me to get out of my, my, what I do for a living. But if you've been bit, you've been hit, you've been punched by a kid you just love, sometimes I might need a little space. Sometimes I just might not be entirely prepared and ready. And what you're doing is you're bringing trauma back immediately into that person's classroom. And so for me, the return is connected to the intentionality because. because if I don't have any say whatsoever, if the superintendent is the designee to determine intent of assault, then how can I be assured that I'll have problem-solving conversations and problem-solving rights? And so, I believe that that is the essence of why the EA is against this. I think the grievance is solved, in essence, by the professional development. I think it's solved by the awareness. But I would tell you that I see this language as kind of... And you may not, some people may not like me saying this. I find this language kind of tipping the scales in that conversation towards the superintendent when really they desire collaboration. And I know there are these restrictive environment issues, and I know all of these things are complicated. But I'm just telling you that, like, I personally, and then I'll give you a retort. I personally cannot vote for this language. And I personally believe that if a student is violent to a staff member, I believe that we owe it to the staff member for empathy and care reasons to try to problem-solve and hear your side and try to do that. And so, I guess that's where I see the disagreement.
I would implore you to talk with the SASAA members as well. I would please implore you, if you're listening to just the EA, what you just explained is much of the discussion, and we have heard and felt what is being said. So what you explained, you have had some good conversations at the level of what we have had conversation-wise around this, and that's great. There are multiple times, most often than not, where there is space that the principals take, that there are other options. Some of the discussion that we don't agree on is this notion that the student will not return until X, Y, and Z happens. And we can't guarantee X, Y, and Z all the time. We do have to live within the law. And so, if they want, if members don't want kids to return unless there's this laundry list of things ticked off, and one of them requires something that we can't do on behalf of the child, we can't withhold education from the child. So you're hearing one side. We're trying to work with the SEA. We really are. And so, that is where I feel like, you know, there's been so many meetings and time spent around this, and we're making good progress. And I feel like the district gets zero acknowledgement or effort towards that. And that makes it, that to me splinters a team versus bringing a team together. And this is not supposed to be splintering a team.
And I'd like to retort to that, please. Like, I need to.
Brad, could the superintendent rebut your comment, too?
It's just to add on one element. So when we were in this room a while back, when we were, when the appeal was being heard by the board, I was sitting next to one of the principals. And I asked right then and there, I go, "Am I wrong to say that when an incident happens, the building principal and/or assistant principal works with those involved to determine what has happened and then sets forth the disciplinary consequences, the behavior plan, that all those things are happening?" So I would agree with you that it does need to happen. I'm saying that this does happen. And I think that's where the disagreement is, that the SEA believes it doesn't happen. We believe that it does, and that's why Carol's saying we also need to talk to our building principals and assistant principals that have to live into this on a regular basis.
And I have to respond, please.
Yeah.
So, and I strongly, I don't know if I'm going to use the word, resent the argument that, like, I don't think the administration should be involved or that you guys don't do enough. I just think that we're part of, like, I see it like an appeals process. I don't see this as like, I'm not just about the EA. I'm not about the administration. I'm not about the... I'm about saying there should be some process where, if you want to inconvenience me because of a staff member's injury, and it is traumatic, and there is disagreement, I guess I would say I still would prefer to stay as the last line like I would in an expulsion hearing or in a... And so, like, for me, I'm sorry, I can't not respond to... I believe in the administrative team, and I believe that they need to be able to do their job, too. I want to make sure you hear me say that and say that. So I kind of resent if that's being implied about my comments. But like, I just think taking the board out of it does tip the scales in one direction. I just feel that way, and I'm going to just stop, and I'm going to listen for a long time now.
Jennifer, oh, Darcy.
I'll be quick, Darcy. It's kind of a follow-up to what Brad said. So I think it is an appeal process, Brad, because I pulled up part of their contract granted. This is the December 31st, 2024 contract. And to Lauren's earlier question and point, we are the next step. And then, there has been discussion about a committee. A committee exists. It's the grievance committee. And so, I guess my follow-up question is, it reads, "If the association is not satisfied with the disposition of the grievance by the superintendent, it may within five school days appeal to the Board of Education." So if we designate the superintendent or name Steve, because I think there's two ways we can go, because we're about to hire a new superintendent, this would still exist if it's part of the upcoming contract. Would that be right? So there is a process of appeal to Brad's point. Only if it's grieved. That's correct. Is that right?
You can look at it that way. That grievance process has been TA'd, and it's slightly different. But the essence of all that is in place.
And this was my concern that I've expressed to one or two board members, that if the superintendent, we designate the superintendent, and as we do for many, many things, and decisions are made on our behalf. But I, as you said, Brad, there should be some room for appeal. That's why I think that if the board is involved in this designating process of determining if it was assault or not, it now, we, to use your analogy, we've already, we've knocked the scales over because we've eliminated for the parent, if they want to raise an appeal, we've eliminated us as the last room of appeal because we participated in the decision, the initial decision. Do you see what I mean?
By doing this language, you're saying? By doing this language, you mean?
By doing this language. By, no. If the superintendent's doing his job as we've asked him to do and designated him to do, then all is well. If on the rare instance, and I say rare because it happens about once a year, maybe once every two years, it does need to come up for an appeal or the parent is, wants an avenue for appeal, they'll come to the board, or they'll complain against the superintendent, and we'll treat it as a complaint. And I think if we're involved, the people involved in making that decision, the subcommittee or whatever, need to recuse themselves then. Do you see what I mean? I just think that we need to be the end. We need to be the last resort of the appeals process.
I agree.
So I'm not sure they're more at the same lang... I don't think we're talking the same language then. So, you may just have to put it to a vote. Or Tim, you had a question?
Yeah, so...
Oh, sorry, Darcy then, Tim.
Oh, sorry.
As someone who is working currently in a self-contained ASD classroom, and these are issues I deal with every day, you know, getting extra vaccinations tomorrow. I've been to urgent care, bit, hit, scratched, throat throttled. Speak up. Sorry. I am a little uncomfortable that this conversation is primarily focused on special ed kids. There are other situations with neurotypical or general education students where this might arise as well. I'm, I trust our teachers, and I trust our admin, and I think that you all are doing a great job. And I see that you have come a long way. I was at that grievance hearing, the documentation you provided. I can see that you are working together. And I think that that's borne out by the fact that from a 10,000-foot level, we're not seeing these come to the board. Practically speaking, this is a non, effectively a non-issue at this point. I feel like if we're making progress on reaching an agreeable process for this, whether it be a special ed child or not, I would like to leave that in the hands of those people who are doing that work and reserve it as a decision that should it happen, come to the board. It would be an extreme case if it came to that level. I know, and I've, you know, subbed a lot in the WSD, so I'm happy that our new special ed director is from there because I think that they have a great process in place, and I see that there are changes being made. I don't think that this is really an issue that is going to come to us frequently. I think it was mentioned that, you know, "Well, does the board want to be convened every time this happens?" If it hasn't happened, you know, I think that's where we're looking at it. But as someone who might potentially make such a grievance, I'd want to know that I have someone to go to. If I'm a single teacher facing building admin, HR, superintendent, if I did not have a recourse, that would not make me happy. But again, I think I trust that the manifestation determinations will happen, and FBA will happen if it needs to, or it will be worked out with counselors and social workers if it's a neurotypical child. I think that I trust you all, that you're doing your jobs. I think changing this at this point isn't necessary.
Trustee Austin. Oh, read on. Trustee Austin.
So, the intentionality part was what I was hung up on last board meeting. And I just feel it's so, it's just subjective. I understand that there's usually a group of people that kind of talk about what is intentional, what is not. My feeling is, at the end of the day, a staff member was injured. That isn't, whether intentional or not intentional, that's a problem to me. And I feel bad for the staff members, and we have to keep our staff safe. So, I still struggle with that. And I feel that I would like to see it as a... We talked about collaborating all the time. And I think a collaboration of one of the griev... It's not the whole grievance committee. I think one grievance committee person, Steve, and SEA member or somebody along those lines, could be that next step. Then the board can still be the last step. So, but it doesn't, it doesn't rest all on one person's shoulders to make that subjective call, I guess. And that's, so that's where I'm at.
I, the subject part of it is hard when we have all the laws that we have to live into. If someone doesn't agree with the outcome... So let's say we did, we did the seven factors, and it was determined that it was not an assault. The individual can, still has the right to file assault if they wanted to. It's not, it's not easy, like, as you can imagine. But there are times, as a former administrator, I would go into the situations, whether it was a fight or crowd control or whatever, and get injured. I don't view that as an assault. I was moving in and doing my job. Now, if a child clobbered someone, and it was not found to be a manifestation of the disability or of the other factors, then that's assault. So like, we're, it is, we don't want anyone hurt. And Darcy, God bless you. I mean, we don't want anyone hurt, but there are some parts of our jobs, sometimes, that there is that risk of what we do. And we don't take assault lightly at all. But we do believe that there has to be that bridge bringing the restorative practices back into the classroom. A lot of the stuff that Brad had mentioned, those are things that we have to work on and be consistent across the board. But it takes mass, mass professional development, and it can't just be one sit and get. It has to be reiterated over and over again and be part of our practice. We have to make it part of what we do every day, and that is our intention of moving forward. That is a lot of what the work we've been doing. And, you know, we're stuck on one thing. Again, the grievance has been settled. But I don't feel good of just saying, "Yep, you said you asked us to go to the board, and we're not going to do it." No, I don't feel good. I'm here again today. I do want it to be in a good place. I think that the best place is it resides as written. And I think you came up with some good strategies of next level, too. So, but it is not, it's not in a vacuum. We just don't, not one person is saying it is or isn't assault. It takes multiple people and discussions. And it's unfortunate we even have to talk about this, but it is...
And as someone who is potentially standing alone in that they are the single victim of an assault, I feel like there needs to be a recourse for them. We're human, the frailty of the human condition and staff turnover and building culture. I think we're working towards a better culture. It's very much seemed that way, and that's been what I have heard. But I don't know that we're there yet. And I don't, I mean, we can always come back to this conversation, right? This isn't a finality.
Yeah. Part of the work we did in the fall around accidents, injuries, incidents was putting in lots of safeguards. So, if the administration is out of the building and someone gets injured, that they're always being brought in the loop so that there is follow-up and follow-through and lots of layers. And Carly, who is the Downey benefits coordinator out of our office, is amazing, amazing at communicating what the reports came back, how to best support, is there anyone that needs accommodations? I think that part is what we've really worked hard on this year in the immediate. But some of these other things are going to take more time. And we, you know, we believe we can get there.
I'm hoping to put this to a vote soon. I still don't know where it's going to land, but if there's anyone else at the table who hasn't spoken yet. No? All right. Well, thank you, Carol. We may still need you. You never know.
I have one thing. I'm sorry, Michael. I'm just thinking about this, because clearly, we have two, a couple of different camps of thought, and I've heard some really good points. At the end of the day, I don't like to give up control of the board of a neutral third party. However, we are in a very unique situation with collective bargaining with the SEA. I really like what I heard Carol say about talking with other unions. I think that's a valid comment, and I appreciate that. We're also in a superintendent surge. So, we have built trust with Steve for a very, very long time within this district. We're going to have somebody new pretty soon, and we're going to have to have confidence in them and partner together. But they would be put into a situation to have, I don't want to say board power, but be that neutral third party, and I'm not there. So, I'm either going to say, "This should remain as is," or "This is something that is temporarily designated to Steve, not the superintendent," because I would not want to go out further than June 30th of this year. So that's kind of my thought. So I don't know if anybody wants to kind of split the difference and compromise, or I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, thank you for your notes. I hope that the superintendent we select is someone that can earn everyone's trust.
Right, and I agree. But they might be new to a superintendency as well. I don't know, because we haven't done that interview process.
Well, we're not going to deliberate on that at this moment. So, I'd like to put this to a vote then, right now. So, all in favor of the Board of Education designating the superintendent to be the determining factor of assault? Please say aye. It may be tricky for me to hear, but that's one. I will say yes. And opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Thank you. Is that six? All right, thank you very much. So it's one-six. Thank you. You're up, Rex. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of one 2025 Ford... Is that, do you call it reg cab or regular cab? Having, not being one of those two 4x4 drivers. Reg cab F250 4x4 grounds vehicle from Gornow Brothers, as recommended by Rex Clary, Executive Director of Operations. This purchase is through the Michigan, or the MyDeal Purchasing Cooperative. Do I have a motion?
So moves, Tevin.
Tevin.
Second.
So, Tim? Okay. What can you tell us about this thing, sir?
So this will be purchased through the MyDeal Purchasing Cooperative at $46,416. I think that was on the action item there. It is to replace the 2004... It is to replace the 2004 Chevy 2500 with a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. This will keep us at four pickups, which we mainly use to move trailers during the summer and then of course push snow in the winter. Normally we do used vehicles. We've purchased them in auctions. But with the value of used vehicles being what they are today, a two-year-old or a three-year-old or even a four-year-old gets in the mid-thirties to high thirties to low forty thousand dollars. So at forty-six thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars, I think this is an excellent price. Yes, it is a new vehicle, but it's stripped down, no bells and whistles. And I think it'll be an excellent value for the district, so.
Just to clarify, did you say that the one it's, we're pushing out is 2004?
2004, yes. And we have one truck older than that we use to, as a, go between the high school and the cosmetology center right now, that's a 2000. So we're using vehicles that are almost 25 years old, so.
I hear that. Any just, any comments, questions? Brad?
I just have one idea. Where's this money coming from?
General fund. This is a vehicle, it'll be licensed. Anytime you put a license plate on it, it's got to go from general fund.
Appreciate that, uh, piece of information. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Great. Seven-zero. You got yourself a truck.
Thank you.
Uh, before you leave, there's an HVAC question. This was new, newly added. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the HVAC equipment through Train for one million- Sorry? Remember we changed the F and the E and all that, because I wa-, because I, I didn't want Rex sitting down and getting back up again.
I appreciate that.
Well, Miranda, as I said, didn't know that, we had an F. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of HVAC equipment through Train for one million two hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-four and controls in the amount of four hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and twenty-five for middle school renovations as recommended by our beloved Rex Clary.
Yes, so.
Uh, can we have a motion, please? Of Darcy Burwick moves.
Garby.
Garby seconds. Oh, Miranda.
So we received the bids for the middle school remodel, um, the STEAM Center, the Senior Center, Science Robot-, uh, Science Olympia Robotics, um, Special Education. There's some movement of, of other programs within the building. And this is new equipment to, for the new construction, the new, the new spaces we're going to de-, to build starting this summer and into the end of summer of 2026. We received a notice today that there's going to be a four percent price increase at the end of this week to address dynamic markets, tariffs being assessed to imports and related inflation. So, normally we would bring this as a gru-, a whole bid package to the board, uh, which will happen at April 8th's meeting. But since this is a purchasing cooperative, we've worked with Train, they're a proven vendor, a partner during this process. We're going to bring it tonight and hopefully save the district roughly a little over forty thousand dollars if we can get an approval.
I appreciate that clarification, because this is, uh, this is a bit of a break from precedent to, to see this. Can you give us a second just to look over this?
Yes, yes.
And, and maybe field some questions while we're doing a quick peruse? Any questions from the crew?
I just really appreciate you bringing it. I hate last-minute agenda changes, but, but, um, this is, this is a good reason. Thank you.
I appreciate Miranda answering the phone. Um, and every Clark Construction, uh, they brought to my attention as soon as they got the notice. And, you know, they acted quick on it, um, so, yeah.
And with that, we are doing this in an ongoing basis. We currently are working through with our partners and our construction projects to evaluate things. So when they bring in those things to our attention, can we purchase things and store them at our district in order to lock in some pricing? Obviously, these might have effect way longer than we can't do those things, but these current projects are right in the bubble timing, so. We're trying to do everything we can to continue to keep the prices as low as we can.
Fencing is one of them for the middle school athletic complex that we've already been notified. Uh, we've released all production for that. We'll store it on site. And furniture, the, what you, you approved last month for furniture, um, for the high school. Uh, we've released, we're going to release that shortly. All the i's are dotted, t's are crossed. And so we hope not to have any surcharges on any of that equipment coming in.
Thank you. As usual, you and the whole team have been excellent stewards at the board's money and I appreciate that. Are we ready to go? Oh, we have one quick question.
Uh, I want to make sure that we, so this is our only meeting for the month of March before potential April and you mentioned tariffs and all of that, so I'm going to say two things. Number one is have we gone through the recently approved things? Like, were you just, like, maybe you were just talking about that and I missed it? But like, have we looked for anything else that might be a forty thousand dollar item? And the second thing I would say is if it's a forty thousand dollar item, please tell us or savings before, between now and spring break, because, you know, that would be a reason to have a good meeting. Especially to my, for me.
So, two things after our last bid meet, after our last, after our last bid day last week, in the post-bid interviews, that's a question we're asking right now. Um, we're asking those type of questions to the electricians, to the plumbers, uh, HVAC, you know. We're asking all those questions right now to see what we can, if we need to get special approvals. And Clark Construction is asking those kind of questions and then we're circling back to the middle school athletic complex too, to ask those same vendors now. We can store it, we've got indoor storage, well, maybe we put it in the transportation garage. Maybe we put it in the old ground shop. We do what we have to do to, to get the material onsite, release the funds for the material, still have the labor in our back pocket to pay them so the work gets done. But yes, we are asking those questions.
Well, and I'll even back that up with one more comment, that tonight we passed the amended budget and we talked about this, and now that I hear this, I want to make sure I also talk to us about, Miranda was talking about in finance and it fits right now that if we hadn't done that, it could have affected our bond rating and our bond sale. So the good news is now we can go out to market with those things, obtain those funds and then you guys can be proactive about that between now or whenever we might see some cost increases due to whatever reason, so. Good, good stuff. Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, all in favor. Thank you so much, uh, team. I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
I'd like to go to the newly renumbered seven or se-, seven F. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the 2025 approved Board of Education schedule moving September 23rd to September 30th in acknowledgement of Rasha Sana, as submitted by me. Darcy?
Support.
Mike says, me? JS says, yeah, okay. Um, I neglected, I, I, due to a, when we were voting on this back in November, I miscalculated where Rasha Sana felt, fell and, uh, thought we were clear, but we weren't. So this is why I'm, uh, well, it wasn't me who caught it. Thank you, Dr. Gold. Appreciate that.
Thanks for being flexible.
Well, we did, we haven't been flexible yet. We still have to vote.
True. I beg you to be flexible.
Appreciate that, thank you. Any, if there are no more questions, and I have double, triple-checked, um, the schedule. I know we're in the midst of, uh, you know, Ramadan right now and I don't think that's going to affect us too much. But, um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. It was a nail-biter. So we will adjust the, oh, bet he's not here. We'll adjust the calendar and, uh, all of you who are at home, reset your agendas to September 30th. Thank you. That's one of those rare ma-, uh, meetings where there's actually three weeks between the two, so that'll work well. Thank you. Mr. Carrick, you sat down too soon. We have two scheduled, we have one scheduled report, uh, and, uh, Mr. Carrick, Director of Safety and Security, our very own Lasso, is that what, is he a Lasso?
I think so, but I don't know if we've talked about that yet, just because it's a new policy.
New policy, new term.
Safety Officer.
L A S O. Are you up on that one? Well, I think soon it's going to be you. Thank you. Mr. Carrick.
There we go. Better? Yeah, much louder. Sorry. So we're going to do a little bit of talking about safety and security. What I'd like to go through at first is to talk about our new standard response protocols. And these are new as of the fall of this school year. So they're not essentially new, but I believe they have not been presented to you as of yet. So I wanted to talk about a little bit about it with you and share with the folks at home, parents at home, just to have an idea of what we are doing within the schools in regards to safety and security. So the standard response protocols. It's, um, it's been founded through the I Love You Guys, which is a, a nonprofit out of Colorado and was based upon a gentleman, a, a mom and a dad who had lost their daughter in a tragic event at a school in Colorado. And it's based upon some clear common language, the standard response protocol. But it's called the I Love You Guys Foundation, which you can go to the website and take a look at it. We also have a link on our safety and security page to, uh, to all of this. Recently, it was adopted by the Michigan State Police and, uh, the Office of School Safety and they've recommended this common terminology to all schools. Currently, it is not, um, a law that, that schools must follow that. However, a law was recently passed late last year and signed by the governor the first part of this year, which does mandate all schools to have similar, consistent terminology. And that terminology has not actually been set yet, but it's due to be done and, uh, language should be approached and approved by July 1 of 2026 and schools have to take it into effect and implement it by the school year of '26, '26, '27. We, as in salinity schools, have adopted what MSP has brought out and standardized. It's, uh, shared with first responders, so obviously in the event of a tragedy at, at any, any school, first responders are responding from local areas. So they'll be aware and have that common sense of what, what's going on, so they'll know what's going on within the schools. Essentially, the standard response protocols are hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. And this is an all-hazard response, so any hazard that occurs within a school, this protocol should be able to address that. First one, hold. Hold is, uh, when they, when the students would hold in their room or area. So they would close the doors, lock the doors, clear the hallway. Teachers would continue teaching within the, the classroom. Their day would go on without transitioning between other classes. Some of the reasons that this may occur, a medical emergency in the hallway, um, where, where our paramedics may have to come into the school to help out that student. A behavior response, if a student was having an outburst in the hallway where other students may be harmed, they could call a hold situation. Um, as I mentioned, the classes are going to proceed as usual in the class. Class transitions and dismissals may be delayed, so that would be hold. The next one is secure. A secure situation would occur if there was a threat or a hazard outside the school. Not within the school, but outside the school. Uh, we had a recent secure situation at one of our elementary schools that was cleared very recently, but you may have heard about that. But, uh, but an example of that would be, um, if there was some police response outside, if there was something going on, a dangerous animal, if there's anything that's going on outside of the school that may transition to our school property, kids at recess, kids leaving for the day. Um, this would be something where they would be secured within the school, the doors are locked and limited access in or out. This, this, uh, if this transcends through the end of the school day, there may be a controlled release where we might escort kids out to, the students out to the buses or out to parents, depending on what the circumstances behold, but we would have time to make that determination. Next one is a lockdown. Lockdown is, is in the sense, something that occurs when the threat is within the school. So if there's a threat or hazard in the school, this is when the lockdown occurs. And what, uh, the terminology goes along with lockdown, it locks lights and out of sight. So essentially, the, the, the classroom protocol would be that the doors would be closed and locked, lights would go off, and the students and, and staff within the classrooms would be out of sight from the doorway from the hallways. These, um, are cleared specifically through, um, administration and/or police that would come and open the door. So a P A announcement would not be able to clear a lockdown. These are, are obviously, we are, we, we do tr-, we do train on all of these protocols and this one specifically is trained three times a year. Some of our, uh, ways to activate this lockdown would be through our Informercast system, which can be locked down through actually a, a, a physical button, something on a cell phone or our, our office phones, the, uh, the, the desk phones, the actual handheld desk phones within the classroom or within the school. The next one will be evacuate. This is our typical, like a fire alarm or some reason to evacuate the school. And this notification would go off with the assistance of a, of a public address telling where to go and the reason being. Some other examples of this, besides the fire, would be a gas leak or there's some type of a building catastrophe where the, where the students would have to be removed from the building and the staff, and for their safety. And along with this evacuate notice, the, the, the location of where to evacuate would be given as well. Last one is shelter. We're just going through some of these shelters, because it's March and we start to go into our spring season with weather emergencies. So a shelter is for a specific hazard. So the, the alarm would be shelter for whatever that hazard may be, maybe weather, maybe tornado, and using the specific language as what, what we're looking for the students to do. So severe weather, as I mentioned, is, is one of our examples of this. Another one would be like a biological or atmospheric threat, which is uncommon, but if there was a spill or a train derailment, something with some chemicals, that could go into place as well with a shelter. Cool. Those are the standard response protocols. And as I mentioned, um, there is links to them on our website on the safety, uh, building safety page. And it's called the I Love You Guys Foundation and there's a parent's guide. Where, where all parents can go and take a look at that and read through all those protocols. It's very simple, it's very clear, it's very plain language, so there's no code words, there's nothing that's mysterious about it and it's available to all to take a look at. And this is what your students are, are, are working on at school when there's a, a drill, just in response to a, a threat or an emergency. Cool. Some last points of things, some updates that we're working on right now. As you know, we've been updating and working on our emergency operations plan, which has been a significant effort and an ongoing thing that, which started before I came. That's coming to fruition today. Um, some gaggle review. We started looking at our gaggle, protocol gaggle. If you don't know what that is, that's something that we utilize with our computer system. And when students are using our computers on our internet, some search words and things can key up on that and can make notifications if there's some concern to what's going on through their, their, um, online presence. And that's alerted to our administrators to take a look at that. Behavior threat assessment. Behavior threat assessment is another, um, area that is, has, has just been passed in law that's requiring schools to create those behavior threat assessment teams. Salinity schools currently does have behavior threat assessment, has been using it. Um, we've worked on recently looking at updating our policies as well as making sure that our training is refreshed. And we have some, uh, train-the-trainer programs coming up for some of our administration to be able to train in this area. Uh, we've been looking at our visitor emergency notifications. So, an area of concern for safety and security is when we have visitors to our air, to our events. For instance, at our athletic events, at something, maybe at our, um, um, you know, a theater present, presentation or some type of music, where you have a lot of visitors in a closed-in area. Looking at some ways that we're able to share our security protocols. What should you do when you're a visitor at a, at a football game and there's an emergency, a weather emergency, where we have to do an evacuation? So we've got some things online that we're looking on that to be able to share this information to our visitors very easily with a QR code where they can pull up the information and we can share whatever we want on there for that. That's kind of in the works right now. We've worked directly with our front office staff, doing some training and de-escalation in our visitor access protocols, uh, just to make sure that they're on the same page and being consistent. Drill procedures, notifications, we're continuing to work through those to be consistent from school to school. Our standard response protocol is helping with that to make that consistency. So when kids, when students are moving from our, our lower L up to heritage, then the middle school and the high school, they see consistent words, they see consistent practices, so they're not learning anything new. It helps build that muscle memory so they're not, not surprised. Last area that we're working on pretty heavily right now is working on our background checks. Uh, we do background checks for all kinds of things. Obviously at our access control, when, when, when we have visitors within our facilities, there's background checks. We have background checks for our, um, visitors that would come to school, uh, chaperones, coaches. And we're looking at doing that and putting that on, um, yeah, having a consistent and, um, same plan for all people. So we're making sure that we're, we're utilizing our systems the best we can, making the background checks as thorough as possible without making it too cumbersome for our visitors and our coaches and our, and our volunteers. That would be our updates for our safety and security.
Anything else to add before I ask if there are any, uh, fast clarifying questions?
No, I just wanted to make sure I put my name up there, my phone number and my email address. If anyone has any questions regarding any of these topics, I know I spoke through them very quickly, because you guys are busy. Um, but if there's anybody that has any questions about them, I'd be glad to talk to them about them and obviously have questions right now.
I appreciate the fast presentation. Anything for the table? We have Brad, Darcy, and- Anything for the table, we have Brad Darcy, and that's it so far. Oh, and students have some things to ask.
Nice.
Uh, on your previous slide, under lockdown, you had that there would be three drills and I think one during passing time. How is that, uh, is that going to be done with students in the building? Uh, how is that going to be, uh, like taught and, uh?
Yes, that is a, a law, so the state does have mandates how we do our drills and how many we do a year, and that is one of their criteria. So, uh, as part of it, it can be during a passing time, it could be during a time of lunch period. It has to be a time when students are not just in their classroom because it's a little bit more of a challenge for them. And, and you should have guidance on that from your teachers and your staff on what you're going to do. And essentially, what would happen is if you are in an area, uh, for instance, if you're out at recess, I know you're older than I, you guys don't have recess anymore, but if you're outside of the building and a lockdown occurs, we wouldn't want you to come back into the school, and your teachers and, and staff members would know that. If you're in another school where, where you're maybe, maybe in the hallway or at a lunch, you're going to go into any classroom that you can to make yourself safe. Lock the door, turn off the lights, and be out of sight. So it's, it's pretty straightforward and I kind of answer it very simply, but it is kind of a simple response. So you should be able to go to someplace that's safe, um, and be able to secure yourself. As you get older, uh, self-evacuation may come into play as well. If you're right near a door and there's a lockdown, you might want to exit the building, so that's an option too. So it's, it's kind of a lot of things that can be placed upon you to do things, but it's to make sure that you have those tools available to make sure yourself is safe. That's a great question.
And is that particular drill going to be announced previous and be?
So, so we should be announcing all of our drills. So that's something that sometimes they'll, they'll try, um, a thought would be to surprise people with drills, but there really shouldn't be any surprise in a drill. A drill is a learning experience, and I am not of, of, of the mindset to surprise anyone with any drill. A lockdown drill should never be a surprise because some of those, um, over the top responses that you might get, people might want to exit out the window, out the building, things like that. And we don't want to have that happen during an actual drill. So a drill is a place to learn, to think about things, to put things in your mind, ask questions, and to be able to respond if there was an actual emergency.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Absolutely, great questions.
Uh, Secretary Burwick and Trustee Gerby, uh, Treasurer Gerby.
Uh, I just mostly wanted to commend you on the manual. I think it's really impressive, the sheer volume of information is fantastic. I mean, I think I sent in some comments, but overall, I'm really very impressed. And I just also wanted to say I have been a part of a couple of drills, including a lockdown evacuation at the high school. And everyone did really well. Um, and I've seen a medical emergency response team in action. I, I've just been very impressed with everything, and I'm very impressed with the manual, so thank you for that effort.
Thank you for the input, I appreciate that.
Mr. Gerby.
All right. Um, I'll start with following up a comment of what you said. I appreciate the fact that you, you don't do surprise or would not advocate for surprise drills. Just as a teacher, we've, um, like, for example, when we have a fire alarm, right? There's this strobe light that goes off. Well, there could be students who are prone to seizures, who that could be an issue for them. There are students who may have issues with accessibility. There are students who, with parapro support. So I appreciate that because that puts those students in the safest position, where they might need a little more support, and they might even need more heads up, or they might need just removal from the situation entirely if it's not safe for them. So thank you for that, okay? I, real quick, so I like the language that you're using, especially as an educator myself, about hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, shelter. Those things make sense to me, so I'm really happy about that. Um, I have a couple of questions about that. So number one is I want to talk about, does this supplant or work in combination with Alice? And number two is what kind of plan do we have to make sure? Because if Tommy doesn't know, and it sounds like Tommy might not, then what are we doing? And that's okay, Tommy. Like, but what are we doing as a, as a staff, as a building, as a, to make that protocol and known throughout? Like, what kinds of professional developments, what are we doing with our students to take them through it, all of that? So two questions, how does that work with Alice, and what are we doing to train on it?
Alice and the standard response protocol by I Love You Guys are two, they are different things, but they can work in conjunction together. So the Alice protocol, which is alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. Some of them overlap like with evacuate and some of the communication and so forth. But, but a lot of the other aspects of it, specifically the counter, would work in conjunction with the lockdown. So Alice and the S R Ps can work together, but they are a separate entity. In the past, we have taught, Alice was taught, we, I wasn't we then, but Alice was taught here. Um, and it certainly can still work with the standard response protocol. We have not, the decision has not been made about continuing to teach the Alice protocol, but it's something that we've looked at, we've talked about. Um, we've been offered, uh, Pittsfield Township Police Department have trainers. Um, I, I actually trained and I taught Alice for about, for about eight or nine years. So it, it is something that we should look at, and it can work absolutely in conjunction with our S R Ps.
And I would advocate for that, and I'd advocate for that for law enforcement's sake too, so that when they are in a situation, they know our language, they know our verbiage, they can go over the loudspeaker and use the words we're comfortable with. And I'd even advocate, if you get the chance, because you're our, kind of our, our guy for safety and security, about, you know, one of the things that's so great about Alice is that it was a county-wide and almost like a, it was a multi-county initiative where everyone got on the same page together. And I can tell you as an educator that that makes me feel safer in the classroom.
Absolutely. I appreciate that input. And Alice is a great program because, yeah, we're, we're all here because, because we have a, a tie-in with saline schools. However, a lot of these protocols that you do learn, specifically Alice too, you can utilize out in your everyday life. Because these things, emergencies happen everywhere, your church, at the mall, at the theater. So they're, they're, they're great points, so thank you for that.
Anyone from the other side, Jason?
Uh, Mr. Gerby had asked, and I wanted to ask the question, uh, because I don't think we got an answer to it. But, uh, to tack on to the Alice training, we absolutely positively should be doing Alice training. I agree a hundred percent, there is absolutely no reason why we should not. And you brought up a very good point, is that Alice training is real world and can be used outside of school. So yes, we should be doing that.
Sorry, is whatable?
What's that?
Alice training is?
Is real world.
Real world, thank you.
Training and can be used outside of the school environment. So we absolutely should do that. Um, but, Mr. Gerby asked a question, I actually wrote down the question, so I'm going to re-ask it. When and how do we train and teach the students, the S R Ps?
So the S R Ps were taught to administrators and teachers in August of last year. So as we come up on this year in August right time, this is the time when I'll be able to help out with that and be part of that. And, um, I don't know that we have a plan yet, how it's going to be presented to the teacher, to the students, other than through the teachers themselves. So it's something that we have to work out, and it's something that would be on our to-do list, but it's a very good question. Um, and, and that we, we've had some conversation too about creating a video, uh, of me on a video that we could share, um, with folks, because it's really hard to get everybody together at one time. But at least if there's a video, then they could watch this video, they could hear the protocol, and, and make some sense about things other than just being exposed to it. So it's a very good point, very good question, but that has not been a hundred percent evolved yet to a final decision.
For those outside the microphone range, there was a comment from Mr. Clary that there are videos available.
And, and that they were presented to the students in the hour beforehand. Did you guys have, uh, Alice videos, or not Alice, but, uh, the S R P videos before drills and things? Okay. Beginning of the year, you guys had some?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clary. If I could just follow up on that really quick. I, um, I think it would be excellent if we had, uh, that we started that implementation in the early childhood at buildings. Um, I think that is extraordinarily important that we, we start instilling that kind of stuff right away. Um, and the recent, uh, secure protocol that we had a few weeks ago, uh, the community is not aware of what these protocols are. And there is a lot, uh, news media will call anything a lockdown. And I think we need to be very, very clear because they are distinct. And I think we need to do a good job of getting the kids to understand what those differences are.
And those are great points. And I, I do know that there are, um, there are training materials for younger students through, in the K through three areas. There are, there are specific training, um, materials for those age students. And maybe reaching out to our news media or something, we could share some of this information with them. Because it is, it's something, it's, it's very common sense, and it's not, it's not, um, protected in a way. So everybody that knows about it, I think, would be great. So those are great topics, I appreciate that input.
Thank you. If there are no more questions, we'll roll along. We're going to be seeing you later in closed session, so.
I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have two, three, sorry, three, four, four quick, four discussion items. And the first are going to be rather rapid, and then, uh, Mr. Bennett will be on. I can see you're flexing your PowerPoint thumb or your slide deck thumb. Good. Uh, we'll start with Brad Gerby and the Finance Committee who met, which met today.
Yeah. So Finance been at four P M. today to accommodate some scheduling and some of those kinds of things. I'm glad we were able to do that. So we, um, we have three, we had, we had four things we talked about. The two of them are kind of married, were kind of married together for us. Um, the first one is budget, was the budget amendment, and we did some review. I'm going to give some comments on that in just a second. The second of which was something called Bulletin ten fourteen. I have copies for any board member who wants the summary document that I made regarding Washington County School Districts. Bulletin ten fourteen, I, I guess since you're getting this, I'll explain it. Bulletin ten fourteen, what it does, and what I really like about is, is Bulletin ten fourteen, it comes out in February. It applies to the previous year. So this particular one is February twenty-five for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, got it? So it lags a year, okay? And what I like about it is what it does is it puts your expenditures in categories. So you're going to see things like, um, on the right-hand side, you're going to see per pupil instructional salaries and where we rank. But then along the, and then like across the top, there are revenue sources and expenditures. But then on the bottom, you also get things for instructional support, business administration, operations and maintenance, and all of that. So some of that, um, is tied into some of the things that we're going to talk about. So you should know that we still, um, if I just tell you about my general consensus on ten fourteen, is that our, um, our numbers still look pretty solid with regards to our, our goal that we say that we want to prioritize the classroom, okay? Like, we still, um, are pretty strong on that front. And, you know, we are still reasonable, like, for example, you're going to see we're like seven hundred. This takes, oh, one of the things I really love about this too, also, is I think we saw a number, was it eight fifteen, guys? The total at the bottom, I think it was out of eight fifteen. So it says that we're seven hundredth out of eight fifteen for that particular category, right? So like, just be aware of that. And it's a lot of data and a lot of points and, but at the long story short, like, it's, like, it, it, it's, it, it paints a, a pretty solid picture that we do spend the majority of our money in instructional salaries. That said, uh, we looked at the budget amendment review, and, uh, I am going to pass along this, this statement and this thought. We need more time as a, um, finance committee to kind of really get into the nitty-gritty of this. But one thing that really kind of stuck out for me and that we talked a little bit about was the idea that if you look under basic programs on our amended budget, and I have it printed out if anybody wants the amended budget, we've had it, right, in our stuff. But, um, if you want to be able to see it in paper form, one of the things is that we were right around like twenty-nine million, twenty-nine million, twenty-nine million, thirty million. And then we just amended our budget to get back to like that twenty-nine, thirty million dollar mark. So we're pretty flat with regards to that. But then, if you look at, you know, added needs, right? Like, two thousand and eighteen, nine million, now we're fourteen million. If you look at, um, you know, maintenance and operations, we were four point five million, now we're seven point three six eight million. So like, we started looking into, okay. So I, I guess what I'm telling you is this, from the finance person, every dollar is a choice for us, right? And we have to make choices to be stewards on those dollars. Well, we, in order to be competitive in the marketplace, made the choice to be more competitive for parapros and drivers and all of that. That's great. We gave the superintendent, you know, that we wanted to prioritize safety and security. He hires an excellent individual to be our safety and securities director, like. So like, we do those kinds of things. We have added on additional positions to support learning in the classroom. We've done these kinds of things, but what it has done to the line items underneath the basic programs, I will just tell you is every single one of those items is up. And so what we're going to have to say is if we want to do that, hi Hank, and be up and up and up and up and up, and that's fine, like, because these were priorities that our, you know, people said they wanted, our community said they wanted, that's fine. But then our community or this board is then going to have the equal and opposite understanding of the fact that we are going to be, in a, in, when we're declining enrollment, then we are going to, our fund balance is going to go down. Um, and, you know, depending on how we are about, you know, we do, like, this past, we did attrition and we absorbed things. We might need to look at some of these areas and look at areas where we could do some things and get, you know, creative and, and work together with, you know, individuals. So like, my point is, I want us, I, I just want us to see this, and that it's a caution on us, and that our choices are important. Like, I'll give you a choice. Last time, in order to be competitive in the marketplace, we said to our person, Mr. Bennett, we need to pay our superintendent, right, what was it, a hundred and ninety thousand to two hundred thousand, right? Well, it was an in, all right, I'll go with this, I, I, the number's evading me. We decided to increase it to get a better candidate pool. I'm telling you, every time we do that, there could become a day where the finance team is looking at this and saying, okay, but like, hey, guys, like, our choices, the bill comes due on them. I'm, I'm a little concerned, I'll flat, I'll call my shot on it. Like, just, I, I'm like, I'm like, tip my toe in concerned because I think the team will work together collaboratively and will talk about it, but just, that's my report about this budget review in ten fourteen, okay? And then the last thing I'll talk about, um, with regards to is, there were a couple of things. We're still to be determined, we're waiting on the, I cannot give the official pupil count. I was hoping to have that, but we're still waiting on, um, return of numbers from one area, so we'll give that to you guys. It's ten percent of our blended count anyway, but like, we're on it because enrollment matters. And then the other thing is, we just talked a little bit about, um, school of choice students. We have thirty-two graduating, we're taking roughly about sixty students, um, sixty students per, so. Um, so we have some homework to do as a, as a finance team. We're going to do some deeper dives into some positions and staffings and all that. We do that anyway, so don't let that be alarming to anybody, like, we, we just have to watch enrollment, we have to watch what money we take in and our expenditures. Anybody questions?
I do, yeah. Um, I read over the bulletin ten fourteen this morning too. I was, I'm always as excited. When Miranda first brought it to my attention, I go, this is great. But, do you keep, are you, are you tracking it year over year?
Yeah.
Because I, as I, it looks like we're not spending quite as much on instructional, uh, in the classroom these days. But there could, there could be COVID money that we're not, or S R money that I'm not really calculating.
Well, that's interesting you would say that. I'd like to defer to my teammate next to me.
Which one are you looking at? I do have a spreadsheet.
Well, and, and the other thing is, I'm not really sure which is the best, uh, the best metric to look at, the total support, instructional support, or?
You all, but.
I know you can't.
So, so, um, I do have a spreadsheet, goes back to two thousand and eleven of the ten fourteen stuff.
I'm so happy to hear that.
Yeah. And, uh, so like, I think when you talk about the ten fourteen, you really have to look at the funding sources. And, you know, in two thousand, um, eleven, we were ranked two hundred and thirteen, and currently we're ranked two forty-seven, so that stayed pretty consistent.
Against all eight hundred?
All eight hundred.
Against all hundred and eight hundred and fifteen?
She's asking about which metric are you looking at, there's a lot of rankings on here.
The revenue.
Oh, no, this is the funding, uh, funding of all sources. So, sorry about that.
Revenues per pupil, all sources.
Yeah, close to, yeah.
At, at the top of the sheet, kind of in, in the middle.
Yeah. Um, the instructional salaries, if that's what you're looking at. You know, in two thousand and eleven, we were ranked at ninety-seven. And then I won't go through every year to now, but then now currently it is, I don't have that one with me right now. I think it was a one sixty-eight, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's one sixty-eight right now.
One sixty-eight. So in two thousand and eleven, we were ranking ninety-seven. Now we're at, uh, one sixty-eight. You know, I have a few more that I kept, like, uh, business administration, operation, maintenance, teacher salary. I think, you know, the, so I don't know. Business administration, we were ranked seven eighty- Business administration, we were ranked 783 in 2011. And now we're ranked 700. You know, the, so I mean, I think we, we're, I think we're prioritizing kind of the same places. And I think some of this, like Miranda brought up, it's a little deceiving because now they have so much pass-through money also. 2011, we weren't having pass, all that pass-through money from like 147C, all that. You know, it's also interesting to note too, that in 2000, you know, 10, 11, only 19% of our income or our revenue was going to MIPSers. And then, you know, boom, you zoom up to 2023, 24 was like 28 to 30%. So you know, that all gets chunked into those salaries as well.
Well, I'm really happy to hear that you're tracking it for the last 13 years, probably with no gaps whatsoever. I appreciate that. Any other questions? Thank you.
I just had one for Brad and, and follow-up. So thank you. And can you tell us what you think your next steps as a team are? To dig in? And then does that perhaps include looking at the general fund page and, and looking at some of these line items? And you know, maybe, we remember we used to put a column in for what, what percent of overall budget is this? Because like some items look like there's a huge delta, but it's also a smaller percentage of the budget. Like maybe getting that data and then doing a, a line item dive. Is that what your plan is?
Yes and no. I mean, the reality for us is that our fund balance is in a place where we can provide these services. If we provide these kinds of things and we can spend because we've said we had some priority. I mean, like at the end of the day, like I want incredible parapros, I want incredible bus drivers, I want incredible SEL coaches. I want, so like, long story short, yes, what I've kind of asked is Steve is on top of now. We are going to look at some of our, our staffing and we are going to look at some of those kinds of things. And we did write, like I wrote that down, that that was our homework is a deeper dive into our just overall staffing models, right? That's not abnormal for us and we just need to be mindful of it. So I guess that's what I would say is our biggest homework thing. And then, you know, thinking about just staying on top of revenue generation, students and per pupil allotment, right? And advocating for those things every chance we can. So that's where I'm at right now on it.
Thank you. Dr. Gold, I'm going to pass it over to you for a policy committee update.
Okay. So we met just before the meeting. This is my first policy chair report, so I'll do my best. We did two district edits to policy, the first on policy 5540, which is regarding student interrogation. This was specifically language around how the district handles when child protective services is called to the school to investigate the possibility of abuse or neglect. Specifically, if students can be, if it doesn't involve the student themselves or their sibling or family, the preference is to have them not interviewed at school. But if those criteria are met, our administrators just wanted some clarity regarding the confidentiality of them filing the report and how and when whether or not parents are contacted is determined. And so really that, that responsibility of whether or not parents are contacted lies with CPS because they know the nature of the situation. And so they should be letting the administrators know if students need to be interviewed outside the presence of their parents. And so we were seeking some clarity, I think, from Thrun and added some language from Thrun regarding that. We also elected to add some proposed language, which the board can approve or not, just stating that if the parents, if CPS says the parents can be there, then the district shall try to contact them. So we'll bring that language to a further board meeting. The second one was regarding policy 5517.02 regarding our transgender and non-binary students policy. This is, we discussed a proposal to simply delete the references to Title IX from that policy because the federal enforcement of Title IX is suggested to change. So just basically we have other law, including state law, that the policy is in accordance with. But there's been a change to Title IX interpretation with the change of administration. And so the Title IX language we're proposing, and again, this will come, but to the board, will be deleted from the policy. That would be the only change that we discussed. The other updates were regarding some Neola updates. And so I'm going to kind of go through these briefly and you'll get more detail later. But a lot of them are close to my heart because they're about cardiac safety and educating our coaches regarding requiring CPR training for coaches, all coaches. There's one that basically just adds the language around Narcan versus just naloxone. So the generic name is naloxone, but many people know to search for Narcan. And so to make our policy more searchable. There is a student conduct policy which adds really good new language as a resource about AI and student use, appropriate use of AI versus academic dishonesty. And so we'll bring that policy here. And then we moved to, oh, and student accidents was just, there's new state law coming that requires districts to have a cardiac events, like an official cardiac events plan. And the district is already doing a really good job, but that we're, we're working on that. And then the last regards, kind of what Mr. Carrick was discussing about criminal background checks. There's guidelines regarding privacy of individuals' criminal background check information and how we are handling that and storing it. And we didn't get through that in the entirety of that policy. So we'll move that on to our March 18th policy meeting. So that was the policy meeting today.
Thank you very much. We accomplished a great deal and we did hear from many members of the public and I appreciate that as well. Quick question. Do we want to stretch our legs before Mr. Bennett comes up or shall we just dive into it? We have what? We have a request to go into a quick recess for five and a half minutes? While I talk, while I say hi to Sarah Fabian. Thank you. Without objection, five minutes. Thank you. We are ready to rock and roll. Thank you very much, those at home. Five minutes quickly. And I was told off already, turned into 15. Sit down, Sulak. We've returned. Thank you. Off we go. Whoops. Tap, tap. Like to reintroduce Mr. Jay Bennett from the Michigan Association of School Boards, who is going to find the presentation that he was sure he had up on his machine seconds ago. That's right.
Well, good evening, board. You all have a copy of the presentation there in front of you. So the survey was closed on Sunday and I downloaded the material from the survey yesterday. And that is the information they have in front of you there. They will have up on the screen here in just a minute. We can start with, with question one. Yep, no worries, no worries. Question one talks about residency in the school district. You'll see that 82% responded that yes, they were indeed a resident of the school district. 15% there responded that they did not live within the school district. 2% would rather not say. That 15% most likely constitutes those staff that you have that don't live in the district and possibly some schools of choice parents as well. All right, here we go. Question two talks about whether you currently work in the district. You'll see that 67% of responders responded that they do not live within the district. 28% said yes, I'm sorry, work for the district. 28% said yes, they do in fact work for the district. And then 4.17% would rather not say. So a significant number of your respondents were residents or parents of your community. Question three talks about what type of stakeholder you are. Remember, notice that this says check all categories that apply. So this is not going to add up to 100%. So don't try to do the math there. You're not going to get there. Parents, current elementary school student, 33%, middle school student, 26%, parent of a current high school student, 25, resident without any children in the district, 17%, teacher, 15%, member of an area community organization, 12%, support staff, 10%, currently enrolled, 5%, would rather not say, 4%, administrator, 3%, grandparent, 3%, recent graduate, 2%. Question number four talks about minimum level of education. Masters plus administrative certification endorsement came out on top here at 28. Master's degree alone came out at 25, bachelor degree, 15, doctorate, 15.25, specialist with administrative certification endorsement, 9, and then specialist EDS at 5%. Remembering that the bachelor's degree is your minimum requirement and then that administrative certification as well. You could, in theory, hire somebody with only a bachelor's degree as long as you promised to work with them to get that administrative certification started within six months and finished within three years. Okay? All right. Question five talked about strengths of the district. I took all the comments that were left, condensed them into this nice little word cloud for you. Student education and teacher came through loud and clear as some of the strengths of the district. Things related to students, things related to teachers. You'll notice opportunities, great. Things related to students, things related to teachers. You'll notice opportunities, great. Excellent. Academics, high. So, all of the positive things happening in the district. Again, not any big surprises in this one. We go on to question six. Now, we're looking at challenges. Now, seeing student in big letters here doesn't mean that the students themselves are a challenge, but lots of things related to students are a challenge in the district, for sure. District, again, the word district just ends up being in a lot of these challenges. But you will notice that, you know, focus comes through here. Education support comes through here. School academics comes through here. So, again, just an idea of some of the things that came through here. Generally speaking, when we talked about the strengths of the district, academics, staff, athletics, facilities, those are the things that were coming through to me in both the survey results and also in my face-to-face meetings. When we talked about challenges in the district, the things that were coming up here, again, related to a lot of those same themes. So, we see a lot of the same themes in both areas. So, what is your strength can also be perceived by others to be something that is challenging, right? And so, we're going to see a lot of crossover between the two areas, for sure. All right. Question seven talks about positions that they think it's important for your superintendent candidates to have had. They can pick up the three. Teacher came in at number one, fifty-six percent. Fell very closely there by building principal at fifty-two percent. Superintendent in another school district, forty-six percent. Assistant superintendent, thirty-six percent. Prior position doesn't matter as long as the candidate has the right skill set at twenty-six. Special ed director, seventeen. Leadership position outside of the district, or outside, I'm sorry, outside of education, fifteen percent. Curriculum development specialist, thirteen percent. Finance director, eight. Community education, five. Human resources, three. Public relations, two point nine four. Again, following very closely what I was hearing in my meetings with staff and community members, that teaching background, that education background, that school administration background coming through loud and clear as something that they're looking for in the next superintendent. Question eight talks about specific areas of expertise. They want you, asking for a ranking of these and how important you believe they are. Budget development management came through at four point one eight. Filled very closely by curriculum development and evaluation. Then, public relations, human resource management, contract labor negotiations, contract administration, facilities management. So, again, that budget development management, that curriculum development and evaluation, things I was hearing loud and clear in my meetings with your staff and community as well. Question nine starts to talk about leadership styles. Forty-nine percent chose the collaborative leadership style. This leader leads by using consensus building and other group processes to arrive at mutually beneficial decisions. That was filed closely there by situational leadership. Leadership demonstrates different leadership styles depending on the situation. After that, thirty-five percent responded to transformational leadership, someone that inspires his or her team and the shared vision. Democratic leadership at twenty-eight percent. Leader that makes the final decision when invites other members of the team to contribute. Servant leadership at seventeen percent, and then delegated leadership at ten percent. Question ten. Now, we're starting to get into some of those experiences and skill areas that they think are important. So, someone that is exceedingly responsive, that follows through and follows up. This is traditionally one of the high scores in just about every district that I do this survey in. That consistency in leadership, that consistency in following through always scores really high. Recognizing value and affirming staff members. Ability to develop and direct and affect a management team. Recognizing, valuing, and affirming students. Maintaining visibility and accessibility to staff. Keen ability to think outside the box. Excellent speaking skills with large and small groups. Demonstrative responsiveness to students with learning differences. Strong communication skills with board members. Strong knowledge of curriculum and deployment. Proven track record of raising student achievement. Maintaining visibility and accessibility to parents. Fostering professional development, fostering professional development of staff. Strong knowledge and experience with school financial matters. Proven track record of active advocacy for public education. Maintaining visibility and accessibility to the broader school district community. Maintaining visibility and accessibility to students. Exceptional written skills, communications. Successful experience working with diverse communities. Experience with school bond, village, singing fund. Demonstrative ability to work with elected officials beyond the school board, adaptive media and public relations. And then our lowest score, already familiar with the district. Okay? Question eleven. Now, we're talking about personal characteristics. Honest and ethical at the top there. Again, always a perennial number one. Strong listener, problem solver, transparent. Strong communicator, collaborative, approachable, empathetic, kind. Resourceful, goal-oriented, inclusive, flexible, personable, culturally competent, tenacious, doesn't give up, thick-skinned, visionary, assertive, self-reliant, firm, sense of humor, sensitive, and my perennial basement, risk taker. For whatever reason, hardly anybody is ever looking for a risk taker as their next superintendent. In choosing the next superintendent, which path or strategy do you think the board should take? Forty-eight percent of your respondents find a candidate with the same basic educational and management philosophy as the current administration, but who can make some necessary changes. Twenty-eight percent find a very different kind of candidate, one who's ready to take the district in a significantly different direction. And twenty-two percent find a candidate who will work to stay the course and continue the good work of the current administration. So, what I like to tell boards, when I see these two in particular, being your one and your two, that's generally an indication that the respondents to the survey are saying that they're looking for some change. We've got a lot of good things going on, but there are some things that we'd like to do differently, right? And you'll notice that that bottom one is someone that's looking to stay the course and continue the good work. That's not to say that there isn't good work happening in the district. There clearly is. But your respondents here are saying there's some areas in which we could do better, some areas in which we could do differently. As I was talking about these results, you'll notice that quite a few times I talked about the respondents of the survey. One of the things that we have to remember is that we got around two hundred and forty respondents to these questions, right? So, how much of that is representative of your entire community, right? Also remembering that over, almost seventy percent, sixty-seven percent of your respondents were community members, parents, not staff. So, you definitely have it weighted much more towards your community and parents as opposed to staff. So, it's something to think about as well. These are all good points. They probably reinforce a lot of things that you as board members believe about what you're looking for in the next superintendent. Having taken a look at this survey results, anything in here jump out at you? Anything that you think is worth discussing a little bit deeper? Questions you may have about the results? What do you got?
I was startled to see that eighty-nine percent of the people thought honest and ethical was critically important. That, it's incredibly high numbers. Interesting.
So, thank you for all of us. I really appreciate it. It's exciting to move forward through the next step. That respondent rate seems pretty low to me in compared to, I'm going to look for what our respondent rate was last time. Any comments on your professional expertise, what that is for a district of our size?
Yeah, I would, I would love to have seen something closer to four hundred to four hundred and fifty. Would have been a nice sweet spot. Two, you know, two forties is a little bit lower than I was hoping for. And, you know, I'm not really, we promoted the survey. We put it out there. I definitely could, you know, I could see an uptick. So, there was a time during the period in which the survey was out there that I asked the office to kind of send out another bump, and sure enough, they sent out that bump, and I saw the numbers jump. And so, it's not that there was an unawareness that the survey was out there, right? It was clear that it was out there. So, I can't really speak to why the rates were as low as they were. But, yeah, I typically would like to have seen somewhere three fifty to four fifty would have been a better number than the two forty that we saw. But it is what we have. So, yeah.
A follow-up on that. Would you recommend that we continue to pursue feedback or move forward?
I think that you have enough information to move forward with creating some selection criteria to add to the posting. You know, I think that most likely more respondents would give you a little bit more depth, but I think it would do a lot to also reinforce a lot of what's already here. So, I don't know that we'd see any great variance if we put out the survey for another week or two. We need to get that selection criteria attached to the post so that the respondents, your applicants, can get a better idea as to what it is that you're looking for so they can better determine what their match is with the district, and so they can get their materials in play and ready to go for applying to the job.
And you said that this was pretty consistent with the in-person meetings that you experienced?
For sure.
Okay, so that helps because that's more data.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Can you give us a sense of what the staff that did, what percentage of our staff roughly completed the survey and what your meetings with staff were like?
So, you can see in the question, question three breaks down that fifteen percent of the respondents were teachers for the school district, or at least put themselves down as teachers for the school district. Now, they had many choices. They could put all the categories that applied in there. So, was that what you were asking about?
Yeah, so thirty-seven people who responded to the survey were teachers.
Or at least put down that they were teachers, yes.
Yeah, and then about how many teachers were you able to, like, staff were you able to speak to?
In the face-to-face meetings. Between the meetings for teachers and the meetings with your union leaders, I probably saw probably around twenty to twenty-five.
Can you give us any kind of flavor for concerns or things that came up specifically for teachers? I had some impressions. Just, it was interesting to me in light of us talking about safety today. I had some impression reading through the comments that there was a lot of concern regarding staff safety, but maybe that was just in the comments on paper. I wondered what kinds of things you were hearing.
Yeah, I was not hearing.
I was hearing a lot of behavior.
Yeah, I was not hearing a lot about behaviors or a lot about safety concerns from the staff that I talked to in those face-to-face meetings. I was hearing a lot of concern about, you know, new leadership, meaning, you know, having to not really start at the beginning, but having to start over again, right? With a lot of stuff, right? Anytime you bring in a new leader, you're going to have that concern about how that's going to impact what you have going on, how long it's going to take for them to kind of get into it and then continue on with what's going on. So, any kind, you know, just the typical things that we experience in any kind of significant transition. So, there's definitely a concern about that. Related to, you know, also related to what you have going on right now with your contract negotiations and how that transition, if we don't have a contract and now we're not going to transition into a new superintendency, a new superintendent, how is that going to impact negotiations? How's that going to impact, you know, any process that we're making in there? So, there's definitely a concern around that as well. Again, I don't think that's any information that's, that's new to you.
So, how would that input from staff specifically impact how you write the search criteria?
Right, so that's what we, that's what we'll definitely be talking here about in just a few minutes when we start to finalize what this criteria looks like. We can talk about whether we want to emphasize anything related to contract negotiations or experience in that, in that field, for sure.
Oh, real quickly, I want to chime in. You mentioned the free response, and I appreciate those things. Hey, Jay. I don't, are you guys having issues? I'm having all kinds of trouble with connecting and getting in and all of that. I don't know if this is a Brad Gerby specific thing, but I cannot, I've tried.
Do you mean you're trying to look something up on your laptop?
I'm trying to look something up from our packet.
I have the same problem.
I've disconnected. I've reconnected. I've done a number of.
Just do a personal hotspot and then you'll be fine.
That's not a me thing.
It's not you.
What's that? I don't mean to, sorry, but.
That's okay.
Essay asks public. So, I don't mean to like, but I would like to be able to bring things up and so. You printed the comments? Oh, well, yeah, but you're going to want them. I'd prefer to be able, ooh, connected and open. Wait. Hold on. Jay, did you work your magic? No, nothing. Whatever. Never mind, move on. Like, I just, I want to be able to look things up, and I can't right now.
Sure.
So, thank you. I apologize for.
Sure. Anything else related to the survey that I can answer for you?
I had one little question. So, Lauren giving that, that data over made me think of it. That just went to the board. Is that correct? The, the open, open answer. Okay.
Correct.
All right, thanks.
I looked at it earlier. I just wanted to look again. So, I don't need yours. I looked at it, so. Not necessarily. I just wanted to have it in front of me in case we, as we built the profile.
I just wanted you to know that I had it.
You did, and it's beautiful, and I would love to keep it because now, I'm sure this is the insight of a doctor, and I am very intrigued.
I don't know if it's a, I don't know if it's any value to you all on the board, but I used a private lockdown AI and summarized all the statements into clumps and sort of spot-checked it for you all, and I'll put that in the board notes on Thursday, or I'll send them out tonight. Why not?
Okay, so, taking a look at your survey results, I crafted, this is just purely a draft. We can definitely make any kind of adjustments that you'd like to make to this. But I just would like to start with just kind of going through this. The items that are, that are represented in the bullet points were pretty much pulled right from the top scores in your survey results. Okay? So, that's where I kind of came up with what we have here. So, we start off with just a fairly easy statement here. Saline Area Schools seeking strong collaborative leader to work with the board, staff, and community to create a successful educational experience for all students. What if Education has identified the following criteria for selecting its next superintendent? So, any thoughts, comments on that opener? Pretty straightforward, pretty representative of the types of things that I was hearing in the meetings. Okay? Vision, long-range planning. First bullet, continue to work with the Board of Education, staff, students, parents, and community on a transparent process. First is our current strategic plan. Works toward attaining district's vision while also maintaining, creating appropriate processes and environment necessary to inspire others toward the district's shared goals and vision. I know that you're very, you know, that you're big on your vision for your district and your strategic planning process and everything related to that. So, I thought it was important that we get that in there as well. Proven track record of improving student achievement. Proven track record of active advocacy for public education. Two things that came through in the responses, two things that came through in my meetings with, with your staff and community, for sure. Anything on those first three bullet points? That's okay.
One note from Lauren.
Well, I just thought that pretty high on the list was fiscal budgeting and curriculum development. So, I wondered if neither of those things are mentioned.
Yes, we talked about, a little bit about that under professional experience. Any other comments on those first three bullets? Okay. Professional experience, master's degree plus administrative certification required. K-two, K-through twelve classroom teaching experience preferred. Central office and or building-level administrative experience preferred. Previous superintendent experience preferred. Budget development and management experience. Experience with curriculum development and evaluation. Experience with contract labor negotiations. Human resource management experience. Successful experience working with diverse communities. Demonstrative responsiveness to students with learning differences. Anything amongst these bullet points that?
I have a quick question. Why do we have the preferred, the three preferred toward the top?
So, I'm assuming that that is a preference based on what I was seeing in the survey and what we're seeing in the, in the survey results. I tend to stay away from required just because that runs the possibility of some applicants looking at that and thinking, well, you know, I don't have exactly what it is that they're looking for and not applying. Even if we have required, we'll still get people that will apply. Even with preferred, we'll still get people that will apply that don't have any of this. But this is kind of signaling that this is something that is a preference of the board, staff, and community. That doesn't necessarily mean it's going to keep people from applying that don't meet the preferences, but I think it's a little softer than required. I think that that required for the certification, I can't imagine that you're looking to hire somebody that doesn't have that master's degree plus that administrative certification. Even if it's an out-of-state administrative certification, it still is an administrative certification. I didn't put Michigan in there. I wanted to leave that open so that if you do get somebody from out of state, but they have an administrative certification just coming to you from out of state, we can change that required to a preferred as well. That's kind of up to you.
Let me rephrase. Basically, I phrase it. Why did we have the preferred at the top rather than at the bottom?
Oh, no particular reason. We can, we can make any kind of change in, in order if you'd like.
It's not because they were weighted a little more heavily than the other factors, right?
I mean, a little bit to that. You know, sometimes it's just as, as I'm looking at the survey on one screen and the, you know, criteria on the other, I'm just kind of throwing, I throw, you know, move things from one screen to the other. Sometimes I keep them in order. Sometimes I don't. It's a personal preference thing, so.
I would like to consider under professional experience, that happens to be our topic tonight, about safety and security and like of our staff and our students. I would want that to be given link. Under professional experience, I would want that individual. Under professional experience, I would want that individual to be well-versed in processes, be well-versed in. The things that are normal EOP procedures and standardized things and that kind of thing, so that would be.
Okay.
If it's, if it's important to us.
Are you online?
It can go anywhere, I just didn't see it listed here.
Sorry, um, you know, whatever experience a candidate comes with, I, you know, as long as they're willing to grow and, and learn and do the work. I, I don't know that it's required, but it could be vision, long-range planning.
I, I, I'll go along with what Brad said, um, especially from my experience, yeah, it's important. Um, I don't know how many superintendent candidates we would get that would have. That kind of role and, uh, a school district our size and the moves that we're making, we, we have a director of. Safety and security, I, I don't know, I don't know if adding, I mean, if we started adding things, I think it would be a Christmas tree after a while. We keep hanging stuff on it until it topples over and it just is too bullet intensive.
That's a good analogy and I appreciate it, I, you know, it, your point is made with me, I, if, if you think that that would limit our candidate pool. I'm not looking at anything that would limit.
No, I, I don't think it would limit the candidate pool, I think it's just another, uh, indication of something that the board is looking for in their, you know, in their candidates. And it's, it's something that they have, they're definitely going to make sure that they put that forward in their materials, right?
That's what I would see it as, is, is we're saying that's important to us. That's on, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, okay.
And, and I'm so sorry, uh, because I was not paying attention at the time that you were discussing the vision and the long-range planning. Proven track record of improving student achievement, that didn't seem to rate very high. And then I didn't see where we were asking them for, to be an advocate, oh, there it is, yeah, those were not the highest numbers, so I was surprised.
So that was a combination of, uh, it was something that, you know, scored kind of in the middle there on the survey, but something that I was hearing a lot from. Your, uh, face-to-face groups, that importance of moving the district forward academically and that importance of being an advocate for the. You know, for the district at both the local and state level, so that's why I thought it, it rise to the occasion of being something that we wanted to include there.
Okay, um, you know, and apologies, cause I don't know, but if, I mean, like, for example. Did our last two, including Sue and Scott and Steve have a proven track record? Uh, uh, what is a proven track record of active advocacy, I mean?
Yeah, so that's gonna be something where if they have that background and experience, whether it's through their state association, M A S A. Uh, whether it's through their experience, you know, if they're building principal through M A S S P, you know, what have they done to be an advocate for their district at both the local and state level? Uh, and if they have that experience, they're gonna bring it to you and, and, uh, make sure that it's forward in their materials and then if they are. Uh, fortunate enough to get an interview, then they're gonna make sure that they talk about it in the interview process as well.
Thank you.
Um, I think student achievement should maybe be the first thing, like. I, I, I mean, I, I see what you're saying with the vision statement, I guess I'm going back to that because this is the first time I'm reading it. I, I mean, we really need to talk about the rigor and the pursuit of excellence is what we call it, so I, I would love to see that even more forward. Um, then the section that we're on, I would like to see PhD preferred as well.
All right, where, how does the rest of the board feel about PhD preferred?
And it doesn't say required, so to your point.
It does not say required, that, that's fine.
So you're saying add, like a comma, PhD preferred?
I will chime in and say that I care more about the teaching part and I care more about administrative experience. I don't necessarily need a PhD.
My thoughts on that is that we may have an absolutely fantastic candidate who is a master's plus many. And, uh, we might actually say, listen, you're gonna get a, we might be able to offer a bonus on the, the day you get your PhD or the semester after.
And it might be a reason to hire someone who's a lifelong learner and working towards those kinds of things too, just a thought.
I don't think it's required by my standpoint.
Yeah, not required.
I agree, I had written down academic excellence and I also wrote down twenty-first century curriculum. I just feel like the, this just doesn't read to me as like, we want somebody who's really. I, I think under vision or it should just pop a little bit more to me, like the first sentence, if I was reading this to apply for a job. The first sentence is so long and paragraph and it's just full of so many like catchphrases kind of strung together. It doesn't to me like really set a vision of like, you know, the vision is to. Continue a tru- strong, build on a tradition of academic excellence in a, you know, high achieving community. Or some, I don't know, I just, I just don't feel like it pops and I also had the same question as Darcy about how. Improving student achievement and active advocacy for public education, neither of those really came through in the survey. So I guess if they were coming through in the conversations, that's different, but improving student achievement, if we were looking to interview. Somebody from, of course, I think student achievement is, um, very important, but I guess I would say something like valuing. Or innovative on academic excellence or something like that, because improving student achievement is only gonna look at a delta. So, if somebody comes from a district that's already high achieving and they maintain those standards, but they really focused on social, emotional learning. Or something like that, then their improvement, their delta is not gonna look as great, but they're still valuing academics.
Well, I, I guess I wanna push back on that a little bit because student achievement, we are more about the whole child, not about somebody's grades. That's focusing on, um, one portion of what we do here, we have a great special ed program, we have a great CTE program. There are, uh, athletics, right, there's more to a kid than their grades. And so keeping it as, you know, student achievement is what that student is looking to achieve. To me is more valuable than looking at, um, some test results or grades or what percentage goes to college.
I, I would agree with Darcy, and I don't know if this is common, but changing achievement to experience.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's, that's encompassing the entire student, like Darcy said.
I, I would suggest, so this is, I like a little bit of time to read over, this is important and this is the first time that we're seeing this, is there, is there a due date? Because, I mean, this team can wordsmith all night, there's no doubt about it.
I'm sure of that, um, so there's not necessarily a time limit on this, the sooner we get this attached to the post, the better. Um, my, you know, my hope was to, to come out of this tonight and have this ready to go, like I said, you know, most of this is word for word coming right out of the survey. Um, as the things that were, uh, that were scored relatively, you know, to medium high on the survey or what I heard in the face-to-face meetings. Um, and the reason that we borrow the wording out of the survey is cause that just kinda makes it nice and clean and easy, so you can see exactly where it's coming from. Um, if you'd like some time to, uh, to continue to look over this and get it back to me, uh, that's okay, uh, if we set.
Be quick, could we do twenty-four hours, team, like, and promise to be quick, because we don't wanna hold up any business you have, of course.
That's fine, I can, I can live with that.
Here's the only concern I have a little with that, let's say I put forth something in the next twenty-four hours to Jay. That would not be a preponderance of the team, right, then Jay's put in a tough spot where he's got to pass value on that and decide. Is it good enough to make the bullet statement, like, I'm just saying, like, we make team, we make decisions as a team, so like, that's the challenge for me. If we could find a, and we're not allowed to like over email, have a.
Right, and that's, and that's one of the reasons that we, that we, that we discuss it.
Challenge.
Right, and that's one of the reasons we discussed it in open meeting like we're doing right now.
So I think we, I, I'd prefer us to just, if we gotta hash it out, we gotta hash it out, but I think we should do it together. And then the other thing that I would say is the, the public advocate, or public education piece, I would say that's even important to me if you want some, like. Because I will tell you, public education versus, let's say we had a candidate who had spent their entire, um, time in private education. Being, uh, you know, a dean of, I don't know, Green Hills or whatever, their experience in an educational setting might be very different. School uniforms and some of those kinds of things, so I see us as a public institution and I would advocate on behalf of that public. And I think it's important that the person is an advocate for our schools, so as a public person, like, I, I'm not passing judgment on anybody's pathway. But for me, that would be important, but I go back to, I think we should figure this out tonight together. I'd feel uncomfortable submitting things to Jay, hoping Jason agrees.
In which case, maybe we should just leave it as is, because I think all of this is just pretty small, like, I mean, I, I prefer, I wasn't necessarily saying we. Like substitute, I just thought having some more about academic excellence and looking at what came in at the, but it's not like a deal breaker to me. Um, maybe we just leave it then, because I, I don't know that any wordsmithing we're gonna do here, we're not gonna get all seven of us to agree on.
My only wordsmithing none is Oxford commas, but.
Then all I would offer is.
Darcy, I see you as a whole person outside of your grammatical.
This is, this is significantly different than the posting last time, it looks different, it's, it's lighter. Um, it's, it's very light in compared to what we did last time, so the last one was one. Um, this, this last one has a little discussion of our district, then it talks about our community and demographics. Then it talks about our vision, then it talks about the qualifications, so has some of this information, and then it goes into the bullets of candidate profile. Then it talks about salaring, contract information and procedure, so it has other elements in it, but it's very holistic, which, which I like.
So you like that, that more information coming in?
So I guess that goes a question for, for you, Jay, is, is this like a standalone document or where's this going?
Yeah, so this goes attached to the posting that's currently out there, so your posting that is currently up has the information that you were just talking about, has the information about the district. Has the information about your demographics, has the information about your staff and where everything is in the posting. This gets attached to the posting, so that now people are looking at your original posting and then they're looking at the selection criteria on top of that.
Okay, so if, if we're agreed that we're gonna do this in open, then I'd like to read some of the, I wasn't gonna take the time to do it, but, um, if, if we wanna do that, that's absolutely fine. So, because I, I really think we had an incredible response rate last time, and so I just wanna use that data, it was four years ago, I recognize that. But that's not too long ago, so it says the Salina area schools Board of Education has determined that the following criteria are those which are the most highly sought. In a new superintendent, so I can read these and then maybe you just can, if you get new ideas or whatever, you could note that. Um, exemplifies the highest level of personal and professional ethics, personal integrity and trust. A visionary leader with the ability to engage all stakeholders in the pursuit of a clear vision for the district that focuses on student achievement. Communication and use of district resources. Leadership experience in a traditional public school setting that reflects a record of success in positions of increasing responsibility. Including five years of administrative experience, however, non-traditional candidates with proper credentials and background may be considered. A community member who embraces the values of the community and will immerse themselves into the community. An approachable school leader who treats everyone with respect and dignity and who is open to ideas and suggestions from a variety of sources within the school community. Demonstrates a true love for all children, demonstrates effective communication skills, parentheses, writing, public speaking and listening. An excellent interpersonal and public relations skills, dedication to education excellence and the success of all students. Demonstrates a commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion, demonstrates knowledge and, knowledge of and experience with. Effective curriculum, instruction, professional development, assessment and best practices to improve teaching and student achievement. Commitment to a philosophy of continuous improvement through collaboration and evidence-based practice. Demonstrates knowledge of and experience in public school finance and fi- fiscal management issues, including a bond issues and sinking funds. We knew we were gonna have bond, um, knowledge of facility maintenance and, uh, knowledge, so not working experience. Of facility maintenance and operations, including support services, facility studies and improvements and bond funding opportunities. Again, might be a little different where we are right now, demonstrates success in human resource management, including conducting negotiation with collective bargaining units. Contract administration and employment practices. An individual who sets high expectations for self and others, holds staffs at all levels accountable and who accepts responsibility for results. Uh, an individual who has demonstrated a solid working relationship with staff while managing challenging external factors affecting public education. Demonstrates a record of direct involvement with and knowledge of political issues in public education at the local, intermediate, state and fed levels. Only two more, demonstrates ability to be visible throughout the district and be actively engaged in school and community activities, that was a huge thing for us. Um, proven leadership ability with skills in implementing change, collaboration, successful systems, creative problem solving. Intelligent risk-taking and team building, so I think some of those are things that would be a little bit different four years later. But I think that that's a pretty good list, so I just wanted to offer that because I remembered how this was written.
I like this list.
Yeah, I guess I would say.
It's cleaner.
And I, I wanted this to come across as, we hired a different firm to do it this time and we. Are entrusting Jay to have these conversations and to do the, you know, the surveying and this is what he brought us. So like, I guess I, that's a whole nice list and like, there are all kinds of cool stuff on there, like professional and personal ethics and a lot. And I'm gonna be looking for those things when I look for a candidate, I'm gonna be looking for somebody's ability to like finance, when I, we talk about finance and budget development. For me, the, the bond will be hand in hand with that, so like, my point is, I just would be careful, I, I think I would accept this.
And there's a lot of that in mass.
Yeah, I think we should just accept this, but that's all.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, we would, I think, like to add something about safety and security. And that's, that's, that's an easy ask, that's something I can easily add as one of the bullets for sure. Um, I'd heard something about possibly, uh, taking that second bullet point, uh, proven track record of improving student achievement to maybe something along lines of. Uh, improving student experience, improving the student experience, how about improving the student experience?
But you, 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 I absolutely wanted to say something about academic achievement, we're a school system. It shouldn't just be about experiences. It, it can be, it can be a blend of both, that's fine, but we, we should talk about student achievement because that's how we measure the superintendent.
I a hundred percent agree, I mean, I, my kids don't always have a great experience, I want them to get a good education. I want them to have a good experience most days, but when they're doing algebra, they're not always having a good experience.
And another way of looking at it is that student achievement doesn't always necessarily mean academic.
Or outcomes?
Could, could we just say?
Outcome sounds too much like testing, I think academic excellence is part of a school system, academic excellence can be that you're doing great in welding. I mean, that's academic, it's a class, it doesn't necessarily mean like SAT scores. School, I feel like you're coming to a school when people come to the district, of course, they look that they have whole child and that's important. But it also, people come here for academics and I think we should have a superintendent who. I think that should be part, I think you read it in the comments, you always see it and I think that's part of what families here care about. It's not the only thing, but I think it should at least make the list.
Could we combine the two, could we combine two bullet points?
Absolutely.
And say, improving academic excellence and student experience? Why, why are we depicting them as two different things?
Academic excellence and student experience, alright, so I'm gonna take that second bullet point, proven track record of improving academic excellence, or, uh. I'm sorry, proven track record of academic excellence and improving student experience.
Proven track record of driving academic excellence and improving student experience.
Got it.
Otherwise, otherwise we would just have a proven track record of academic excellence.
Got it.
In which case I know I wouldn't qualify.
Proven track record of driving academic excellence and improving student experience, done. Alright, under professional experience, I'll put something together for well-versed in, uh, school safety and security or something along those lines. Next set of bullet points, talking about personal, exceedingly responsive follows-up follows-through embodies highest degree of moral, professional, ethical behaviors. Establishes, demonstrates the value of strong relationships with students, staff, families and community, transparent and collaborative leadership experience. Maintains visibility and accessibility across the district and community, now you notice that that kind of encompasses, in the survey, it was a little bit separated. Accessibility, visibility to parents, accessibility and visibility to staff, accessibility and visibility to students, those all scored relatively high, so. I just kinda threw them all together in that one bullet point, basically just saying that your next applicant should be someone that's looking to maintain visibility and accessibility across the entire district and community. Okay? And then our last four there, keen ability to think outside the box, develop creative solutions to complicated problems, recognizing values and affirm staff members. Experienced with and or ability to develop and lead effective executive and administrative teams, strong communication skills with school board members. Anything in those last two areas under personal and management decision-making? Yeah.
I have a tiny item.
Okay.
I think I would just make it say strong communication skills, period. You're the face of our district, I mean, you, we're gonna disagree as like board members and it's.
Do you mean on the last bullet?
Yeah.
I wanna change that one too.
Strong communication skills would be enough for me.
I, I would add, I mean, I, exactly what Brad said, but there, in this role, it is critical to maintain a working relationship with public officials. Publicly elected officials like us.
Sure.
Um, and so I think it should say something about collaboration with school board or understanding of roles and responsibilities. Between the superintendent and board, something, something about that relationship, I think is, is incredibly important. Then on personal, for that last bullet, um, that seems a little bit low bar for me. Maintains visibility, I would suggest writing exactly what we wrote last time. Demonstrates ability to be visible throughout the district and be actively engaged in school and community activities. Because our last two, at least the last two superintendents, and I, I know maybe more superintendents before that. Did an excellent job with that. And I think our community is used to being served in that fashion.
Okay, so could you either write that up for me or email that to me? Thank you.
I'm just gonna send you this whole thing out.
Perfect. And I will change that last bullet. Look for email. Done. Alright, so on that last bullet point on the strong communication skills with school board members. So you were looking for something closer to uh, experience with collaborating with school board members, or what were you looking for there?
Yeah, just something, uh, speaking to um, the professional working relationship, the symbiotic relationship, the, the ability to work with. Different viewpoints or, you know, just some, something that talks about the nature of a positive working relationship between a board and superintendent. That that's something that we will expect and value.
Yeah, I, I think, I agree with Jennifer, I, I don't say that all the time. Uh, but uh, strong communication skills is just strongly suggests that he, the next superintendent, they might be very clear in uh. Telling us the wrong thing, collaboration is what we need. Collaborate, collaboration is what, if, as long as, as long as a collaboration word is in there, I, I can, I can live with that, no matter how it ends up.
Okay. Alright, I will reword that as well, uh, and one of the reasons that I. One, it was something that came through in the survey, but the other thing, this is especially important for those that have not ever held a superintendent role before. It has been uh, our experience as an association, my experience in work, in you know, doing this kind of work. That one of the trickiest things that a new superintendent has to uh, deal with is that working with a board of education. Because it is unlike any other, I know, I know. Uh, and so it's one of those things that until you actually are doing it, uh, you know, it's really hard to kind of imagine what it's like, and so. You only get that experience as a superintendent. And so that's why I think it's important that we get it in there. So, but I can definitely make some rewording of that, uh, include collaboration, uh, maybe something in there about the experience of board governance, something along those lines. And I'll get that last bullet point cleaned up for sure. Okay, anything else? Okay, so uh, next steps, I will take a look at uh, the wording that Jennifer sends me, I will take a look at my notes here, I will. Clean this up and get this posted to the uh, to the posting tomorrow. You're probably not gonna hear a lot from me for the next couple of weeks because right now it's just having it out there. Having it uh, collect applications, I will be working the phones and working the emails on uh, you know, talking to some people and encouraging them to apply, now that I've got the selection criteria. Attached to the posting, that's gonna start moving the, the needle on the number of applications coming in as well. Remembering we've got spring break coming up, um, so that's gonna be kind of a quiet time as well. Uh, whereas a lot of, you know, a lot of these individuals will be taking their break, I'll be taking my break. But uh, I'll definitely keep you on the loop as we're continuing to work through this, but like I said, if it gets a little quiet, don't get too worried about it, but if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Uh, but don't take uh, no communication from me as an indication that anything's wrong, it's just that there's really nothing happening right now. We're just continuing to collect applications and move through the process, okay? But anything you need, please let me know.
Is it fair to ask, what's the word on the street about the Celine job?
It is fair to ask that question, sure.
What's the word on the street about the Celine job?
Uh huh.
I'm asking.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
I've gotten some very positive uh, inquiries about the position, uh, they're all waiting for the selection, not all, but I mean, a lot of them are waiting for the selection criteria to get attached to the postings, then get a better idea of what it is that, uh, that's being looked for. Uh, but yes, it's been very positive and I'm cautiously optimistic that we're gonna have a good pool to look at. Absolutely.
Thank you, thanks for navigating the whitewater of wordsmithing with the Celine board.
No worries at all.
It's, it's toppled many a guest in the past.
Anything else tonight?
That's it.
Thank you very much, board, I appreciate your time and I look forward to those notes and we'll get that up and attached tomorrow.
Thank you very much, sir, safe travels back.
Thank you, thank you.
We have one more, uh, let me get my notes together, uh. In the last board meeting, for those, for those of you who needed a refresher, I was empowered to reach out and negotiate with. Uh, our, our selected contractor for a third-party review, Scott Robertson. Uh, and I did that, uh, I narrowed the scope, I just have a few notes here, I won't read them all to you. Um, I did narrow the scope with him during a phone conversation, which is good, um. I made sure absolutely based on things you said, we do not wanna handle, examine the handling of fees, facilities, fundraising or resource allocation. Check that box, I reviewed that with him. I talked about not tripping over Jay Bennett along the way while we're doing the superintendent search, so if he comes down. To do his interviews or, or put out stakeholder surveys, he's not going to get in the way of what we're doing here, he, he absolutely recognizes that that takes full value. He mentioned that if we waited a little too long, um, we, he, he might miss out on some excellent opportunities at the. I gotta write down, the M I A A conference. Uh, which, at which our athletic directors are going to be attending. Uh, in this week in Traverse City, which is where he lives, so he hopes to run into them. Uh, the last thing was the price, I said, okay, look. Look Scott, we, we reduced the scope and the range, can we lower the price at all, and he said, we made a deal, this is, yes he could, so we, I knocked a couple thousand dollars off. His price and that's uh, and now I have, I, I took the liberty of drafting a contract, having never done one of these before. And uh, I know you probably have a lot of questions, but there are questions that I have as well if it comes down to it. Which I won't ask right now, which I may ask, uh, we'll see how it goes, so if I can answer any questions right now, fire away. You wanna start with a question, sir?
I'm gonna gunk up the process.
You're gonna what up the process?
I'm gonna gunk up the process, I think that's a word.
Heard that word, okay.
So, um, I would tell you that when we first went into this in October. I'm not sure the goalposts are exactly the same place that they were before, and let me explain to the public what I mean by that, so. Um, we have received some additional information like in the past, um, you know, and it, very recently from Steve about. The impact that our, um, Mr. Welton has had in his conversations with the athletic department, I really appreciated the feedback we received and. I really thought that that was a thorough report from Mr. Welton, talking about the conversations he's engaged in and. His feel of the lay of the land and all of that, so like, I guess I would say this, I never really thought I got an answer when I asked this question before. We are also a different team of seven individuals, you heard me tonight talk about every dollar that we spend. So we have the, the Welton report, which I thought was very affirming of our athletic department. We have our niche dot com saying that we have, you know, one of the, if not the best athletic departments in the state every year for the last five years. And then I would say that.
It's not the athletic department, it's the athletic team.
Okay, then athletics, but the, I, I would argue and say that, you know, every dollar matters, so even if it's ten thousand dollars. I would like us to reaffirm our commitment to doing this at all. I guess I'll put a motion on the floor if I have to, or, but I'll make a discussion first to see if there's.
Could you do me a, the favor and, and just speak to more about what Wayne, Wayne Welton was doing and then. My understanding it was an eight thousand dollar expenditure.
I, I would like Steve to speak more to that point, um, we pay him a per hour, you know, to work with her, that kind of thing, so, work with the athletic department.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that, so, um, in October, uh, we, or I contracted with, um, Wayne Welton. A former well-respected athletic director who, um, agreed to work with the athletic department. To address some of the concerns that had, had been raised and, um, you know, I look back on that now and realize that as superintendent. Three years ago when, uh, both, uh, Ashley and Jeff were brought in, you know, usually you do provide them with a mentor. And although they received a mentor through, you know, the district, it wasn't somebody that had done that role before and I, I think. You know, ultimately I, I should have done that, um, with that said, so in October, uh, contracted with, um, Wayne Welton. And basically he said that I'd like you to work with them, we agreed upon uh, an hourly rate and a certain number of hours. That would take that through the end of December and, um, then in addition. When, um, he's, he came back after December and said, hey, we're, we're doing a lot of good work. Would you consider keeping me on as a mentor through the spring and I, and I, I agreed to do that and then most recently. He provided me with more or less a progress report, I, I wouldn't say that it's a fundamental complete review of the athletic department. But it, but it, it did in my opinion, address many of the things that, um, are requested in such a review. Uh, and the other thing that I thought was good about this progress report is it, is it pointed out the areas of strength? And it certainly promoted areas that the department needs to grow in and that they've been making progress in, so that's how that has all played out. Uh, we have a question from Jennifer Stevan.
So I would just offer and I wanna be extremely careful after what happened at the table the last time. With regards to our staff and discussion of, of, of different things in public. To catch everyone up, we were emailed a report from Steve, um, with regards to Mr. Welton, agree, very, very respected individual. I don't wanna get into the, the, the pieces of that because that's not fair to our employees. I were, I, I internalize that, that's just me, internalize that as performance evaluation, so an HR type performance evaluation. When I think of what we voted on and what the scope we discussed was, I think that's a process. Review of the department and the processes, those bullets that Michael said. It's, it's not a performance evaluation or report, so that's, that's how I read that and that's all and, and. This is exactly what I was afraid of when we were sent that email the other day with, with saying, hey, I don't, I didn't agree with this decision, here's this report. I think we need to be really careful, I heard what the staff said to us in email after we had that conversation. And I'm just gonna not say anything else about personnel performance at the board table.
Tim, and then Darcy.
Yeah, I agree with Jennifer on that and I think that, um, there are two different things here. Steve felt the need or wanted to hire a mentor and he did and that's fine. I understand Brad, the ten thousand dollars, but I think let's put it a little bit in perspective, so I did the number based on twelve thousand. That's equivalent to point zero, or zero point zero one six four percent of our budget. If a family of three with a hundred thousand dollar income going to McDonald's one time in a year would spend zero point zero three percent, so this is half of what. A McDonald's run for a family of three would cost. So I think that that, you know, I think it's important to be cognizant of that, but we also have to, we're, we're cognizant of our taxpayer dollars. Our tax, we, we heard from many of them, that they wanted an independent review. And so that's what we, uh, that's what we voted on.
And I just wanna reaffirm it before we tell Michael enter into a contract. If you guys tell me that we want to, we will.
Sorry, Brad, appreciate that, Darcy.
As a new board member, I've struggled with this, as an audience member at that November meeting and, um. And trying to catch up with the amount of information that, um. Transpired over a few months. Um, and I have spoken at the podium before where I'm, I'm very much a proponent of policy and procedure. And that giving legitimacy to the actions that we take and I mentioned that I did not feel that. The board in November followed proper policy and procedure. Through that process. I have had lively conversations with Lauren about this, Tim was very kind and walked me through a lot of it. I am still, I guess frustrated that I don't have all of the information and I feel like I made a very large decision not knowing. The extent, I mean, I knew that we had gotten him at Wayne Welton as a mentor, but the extent of. The, the scope of his work and the cost of that and that definitely would have factored into my thinking. Had I known that previously, I agree, I don't think that they are the same, but there is overlap there. And I feel that additionally with, um, with our work looking at. What had happened with the sort of, um. Initiating event with the football forfeitures that a lot of that information was cleared up and we. Found that the athletic director and Steve had acted with propriety and integrity. And I feel like this is, the foundation for this review. Is, is tainted, um, had this come separately or just as a normal course of business, there's value in it, absolutely. Who doesn't want to work to improve their, their jobs or the services that they provide? I'm just struggling because of how this, um, this is entangled with. Everything that happened, right, it's not a clean decision.
Thank you, others? Oh, Jason and I.
I'll, I'll echo a lot of what Darcy said, cause Darcy and I are both new members of the board. And we both saw it from a completely different lens than the board did back in, uh, in November. And I agree, I agree with Brad and I agree with Tim, uh, which is troublesome because, you know, it's a. It's a, it's a small piece of the budget, but nonetheless, it's dollars that we're spending and. The way I look at it, and I think Darcy actually said it very well, is the triggering event to this, we have found to. Essentially be null, uh, null and void of, of any substantiated fact, so. Based on that, I think we have to look at it from the perspective that. If that had not happened, we wouldn't have triggered this entire discussion or debate whether this was needed. Maybe it would happen for a different circumstance, but the triggering event ended up not being substantiated.
It wasn't, that wasn't the triggering event though. I had been, I'd been asking for that well before the football team started. So, so we have to separate those.
The, the climax that caused this.
Again, didn't cause it, cause I was asking for it before.
Okay.
And just to make that clear, um, I was asked by the Sun Times about this quite a few months ago, weeks ago, and I very clearly said. This is not a direct reaction, the third-party review.
third-party reviewer is not a direct response to what happened with the football team. But the football incident did put some things on the radar. Tim, Trustee Austin added more information, pointed out other issues, and we've got a lot of squishy spots. I don't know if you put up the analogy of smoke, and, you know, there's a lot of smoke here and there, is there a real fire that we need to address? I got that. I want to clarify a few things. I was one of the handful of folks who voted against it, as you well know, and that's, and we all have our right to a vote. But I was also on the ad hoc committee that stepped up with Tim and Lauren to look for a third-party reviewer. So I have given a huge amount of thought to the value of this and what this can do for the district. And what I've come down to is this, we have a lot of athletic programs, with 30-something or 60-something, they called us Celine University at one point, two years ago during one of the reviews. And that's complicated. There are a lot of coaches coming, assistant coaches, a lot of issues, and a lot of difficulties in running a show like that. So I, somebody said it, maybe it was you, I see this, it took me a while to get there, but I see this third-party review as a continuous improvement for the district, not even so much for the athletic department, but for the entire district. I think there's a lot of value to that. And I think that if, we should be doing this sort of thing for as complicated an outfit as we have here, we should be doing this sort of thing once every five years, or some other cadence. And I just want to also say that I absolutely trusted you, Tim, when you said, and I have no reason to not believe you still, that it's not just the football. So, and you had mentioned other sports, and going even back to two years. So there's people who have been at the board table dealing with some of these things. I'm not trying to discredit your lived experience here, too. But so that's where I am now. So if we had to put it to a vote, I'd say, well, if you wanted to add something, please.
I understand that, that point of wanting to comprehensively review a department to see improvement. I just worry that the perception from our athletic department is that they feel now there is a lack of support. I'm not saying there is, but I believe they feel that. And that's just something they'll have to do. In other words, I'm not, I know that they're not afraid or worried that if somebody comes in and reviews their department, they're going to find anything other than what, you know, Wayne has been working on. I just get concerned about the perception that there's a lack of support there. But that's it. And I completely understand and respect whatever decision the board makes. I understand that it's the board's decision.
I appreciate that. Brad, do you have a motion?
No, I think we're landing the plane then, because like, it doesn't sound like we have a preponderance of, I wanted to ask the question of, is there, you know, is it still out there? And do we still want to continue it? So I suppose unless I get other information, then the information says, let's go. So then I would make the motion to enter.
But we've made the decision last year, so I don't think we need a motion.
But he would need one to go, enter into this contract, right?
Brad, Brad had a different sentence in mind than you were thinking.
Yeah. So doesn't.
Just let Brad say it, or?
I would just motion that we would empower Michael to enter into a contract for $10,000 with Scott Robertson.
Everything, that's all inclusive. He was, he was very clear about that. He's not going a nickel over that.
I will second that.
So my only other clarifying question procedurally, Michael, was generally consultants have their own template for contracts. He did not?
He did not.
Okay.
That's why I asked him that directly. Jay Bennett had a lovely template, which he shared with us, and that made my life, or our lives a lot easier. I have a contract that I've drafted, and I can share it with you all. It may be too detailed, and he and I, Scott Robertson and I may talk about this tomorrow, but it has a, if, since we've been talking about this, do you want to just put this to a vote, Brad, and then before, so I don't waste my breath on this? Well, we had Brad and Tim?
Yeah, and that's a motion to enter into a contract.
All right. Well, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, well, in hearing none, let me just ask you a few of the questions about the contract then. And thank you. I'll send this all to you with the information included. I basically talked about the scope of the work that's required, and based on communication with students, coaching standards, climate and culture, Title IX compliance, leadership development, mentorship, processes for recruiting and hiring athletic department, or I forget what it was, athletic department staff, processes for recruiting, hiring, evaluating, and terminating coaching staff, and the verification of student athlete residency and compliance with eligibility rules, plus a couple bullet points under each. The deliverable is a comprehensive report detailing strengths and weaknesses of the athletic department and programs, practical suggestions for improvement in each of the focus areas, acknowledgement of any past issues and efforts to mitigate or remedy those issues. The timeline is, and this is an open question I'm asking you all, when would you like this done by? When can I, I think, I get the sense two months is what would be reasonable. So I have to use my fingers, April, May. So before Superintendent Lodge leaves, I guess. Does anyone want to propose a date?
When is the June meeting?
Say again.
When is the first June meeting?
Eighth.
The only June meeting? By then?
By June, by the first meeting in June? Okay.
Yeah, would it be possible to have it conclude before that, so we have time to read the report?
How about May 17th, Norway's National Holiday? There we go. The board agrees to compensate the contractor a total amount not exceeding $10,000 for the services rendered. The amount is inclusive of all associated costs. Payment shall be made. Next question is, installments are in completion, under completion, upon completion, I suspect upon completion? Wait, half now, half later? I don't know.
If he didn't ask for it, I'd do it all upon completion. Like, it's just negotiation.
I'm asking, I'm asking the board upon completion, then I'm hearing. Confidentiality, contractor agrees to maintain the confidentiality of all information obtained during the review process and not disclose any information to third parties without the prior written consent of the board. Either party can terminate this contract with X number of days written notice. Next question is, how many days should we give them, or us, if we think it's not going well, to contract, to terminate the contract? I don't know what usual is.
Usually is 30 days.
It's almost like you're in business of some sort, right? 30 days. Okay. I'm going to go with 30 days from the businessman in the end of the table. I'll flesh this out, send it your way. He told me on Monday that he's a night owl, so I may have a conversation with him this evening. He's probably watching now. Hi, Scott, welcome. Thank you. So we'll move on from there. Thanks very much. I have no idea where my agenda is. I know, I've got it now. Thank you. Administration, board updates. Please and thank you. We'll start with you. You got nothing. All right, thank you. I appreciate that. The rest of the table? Hey, students, thanks for sticking out this long. This is well past my bedtime. I don't know about yours. But students, we'll start with you.
First, I'll just say that the bands did the Rallot Festival, and they got all ones, which is the best score. Yeah, it's the best score. So that's good. And then the other thing was that I hope the contract review with the teachers is going well, and they're making progress on that.
Can I ask you a question? Are the students, by and large, talking about the contract? Or is it just you, because you're like really dialed in?
A little bit. I think there's like a little bit of word, but I think it's mainly, mostly just me.
Thank you, thank you, Tommy. Tommy, I appreciate that. And I did want to say, I didn't say Kate, see Kate, but I think I took a video of her as we both took the plunge. And well done, Kate. I appreciate that. I hope you raised lots of money. Thank you. Trustee Austin? Trustee Gerby, Treasurer Gerby?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge our EA members who visited us tonight, who were around and what have you, thinking about you. You know, it's, oh, this is tough on me. And that is that. I want to say good luck to our students who are going to DECA this upcoming weekend. DECA State Finals is happening this weekend, and my son will be there and all of that. And don't make any bad trouble in downtown. And then the last thing is, I'm going to put it out there that I miss the superintendent's recognition. I miss it. I like it. I miss the superintendent's recognition. So I'm just nudging him a little.
All right. Secretary Burwick, sorry.
I just wanted to acknowledge the teachers who came as well, and staff and admin. I really honestly believe that we have great students, great staff, great teachers, great admin, great superintendent. And I do think that we all have the common goal of supporting our students and helping them to achieve their personal bests and whatever it is that they are wanting to do. The humanity of us all means that we're not all going to agree on the path that we take or what we need to get there. But I think overall, we do a pretty good job. And if there is doubt, I would like to say that I also trust the athletic department. I think that they are doing a good job. As with all of us, there's always room for improvement. And just want to thank everybody for what they're doing. And on a minor note, CARE's meeting is tomorrow, so we'll find out what gets funded.
Thank you. I don't really have a great many things to say. It was a very long agenda, and there's still more to go. I did want to say thank you to everyone who supported us during the splash, the polar plunge. And I ran into the teacher who is the coach for the marksmanship. I don't know the, do you know the name off the top of your head? Susan Osborne. She is thinking strongly about inviting us down to maybe and see the, see the team in action. I hope that's not a big surprise. You're not going, no, you'd be behind the gun. Thank you. But I mean, it might be an interesting opportunity to get down there and see a superb, speaking of superintendent's recognition, they were recognized last year, and this is a chance to maybe see them in it work once the weather warms up. Thank you. That's all I have.
Happy Try Three. Happy Spring Sports. Happy, happy final stretch. It is hard to believe where we are. And I'm thinking about our seniors and thinking about their families because I've already heard a lot of tears have been shed going into the final process, I guess. So I empathize with them. Our Foundation for Celine Area Schools meeting was today, and I'd like to thank everyone, community members, anyone who might have been on an auction item, a ton of volunteers. They raised $90,283, which is a huge success. It was a huge success for many different reasons, not just financial reasons. It was a fun time in the community. And our board reps for the foundation were there, the ski team was there, helping with the coats. A teacher came and talked about her grant. Thank you, Melissa. But one of the things that I really noticed, having gone to those for years, is I saw a lot of new generational faces. So incoming families with smaller children, and that continu- continuous evolution of making sure that our legacy families and our alumni families are still connected, but we're welcoming and including those new families, too. So that was really exciting to see a lot of, a lot of new people participating and wanting to get involved with the foundation. So thank you.
I was just going to shout out the orchestra, who also received ones, at least the middle school orchestra. I only have knowledge of some of the information, but, and acknowledging International Women's Day this past week, and all the fabulous women and young women we have in the district.
Well, since Lauren brought it up, it ties into something that I got to experience. I want to thank Darcy for inviting me to go to the Science Olympiad practice. That was fantastic. I brought my oldest daughter, asked if she wanted to leave, and she said no. She wanted to hang out and learn more. I thought that was fantastic. The students there embraced her being there, answered all kinds of questions. It was terrific. I got to participate in two Sharp Tinks with Ms. Stukie's class. I have to tell you, the students absolutely blew me away. And if anyone ever says that women are not interested in STEM, they need to come to Ms. Stukie's class, because those ladies blew me away with their knowledge, their prototypes, their thought process. It was absolutely fantastic. We need to have a huge spotlight on that here at Celine. They do an absolutely excellent job. They knocked me over so much that I invited some of the students to come to our R&amp;D lab in Ann Arbor to see how biosensors are manufactured and tested. And I've gotten a couple emails from a student that is very excited about doing that. And that makes me happy. And that's, that's why I wanted to be on the board, to experience that stuff. But all parents can, all community stakeholders can experience that. And I think we, I think we need to shine a big, big spotlight on that here in our district.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Consent agenda, I'm going to bypass the first part. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the consent agenda as printed. Darcy Burwick?
Support, Stebbin.
Supported by Jennifer Stebbin. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Seven zero. Items for the next agenda, sir?
Right, we'll have the MYKIP Teaching and Learning Update led by Kara and the Teaching and Learning Team, and that's the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. We're at the public comment section. A member of the public can address the board for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled in a future meeting. I do not believe we have any student comment sheets, but we do have other stakeholders, so I'm going to call them up. Ryan Davidson first, and on deck is Amy Tessellin. Thanks, Ryan. For those of you who are new, at the two minute, two minutes and 30 seconds mark, is that the way it works? Two minutes and 30 seconds, you'll get the yellow card, and the chartreuse card will come up at the three, I don't know what color that is. Magenta. Thanks, thanks, Ryan, sorry. And she'll start the timing as soon as you speak.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Ryan Davidson. I know a lot of you. If I haven't been here before, I've coached your kids probably, or you see me around. I am a parent, and that's the main reason I'm here tonight. I stand before you today to express my grave concerns with the hiring of Daniel Carrick as the Director of Safety and Security for our school district. And I would like to say that, Dan, he's not in here right now, but we have history. We go back 10, 15 years on the law enforcement side. This is not, this is not personal. This is because my kids are involved in this whole thing. This decision not only raises serious questions about the district's vetting process, but also undermines the public trust, particularly when it comes to our student safety and the integrity of the hiring process itself. First, I want to point out that Mr. Carrick has a troubling history, including his involvement in a Title IX violation case at Eastern Michigan University. Despite this, he was a select for this crucial role overseeing school safety. In addition to the Title IX concerns, his actions during the investigation, specifically his failure to take appropriate action in a case involving his former subordinate, raises questions about his judgment and suitability for a role that should prioritize the safety and well-being of our students. It was availed during this investigation that Mr. Carrick was approached by one of his subordinates, I'm not going to name him, who was at the time a Washington County deputy, and previously had worked under Mr. Carrick when he was Deputy Chief of Westland. This individual was the main suspect in this case, which further.
Is it a personal attack? If, we had some training on this at this point, it's, it's a critique of the person in his role, not him directly. So, well.
Well, to make it long and short, then, you, you hired an individual that had eleven Title IX complaints that he swept under the rug at a public university. And I don't understand our background check process or our vetting process that allowed that to go through. And it's interesting that the HR administrator is also the Title IX coordinator and none of this stuff came up. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. I appreciate it. Amy Tessellin is followed by Susan Eastep on deck.
Thank you, Celine Area School Board. As a parent of two students, I'm here to speak in support of public education, as I'm sure all of us are here. A strong public education is the foundation for our democracy. Big money and corporations have been working to dismantle public education for decades and decades, dividing us and/or vilifying teachers and the most vulnerable students in our society. I'm here to ask our community and our board members to stand in support of our teachers, our policies and practices, and of course, all of our students. Teachers are the backbone of this district and they need higher compensation. Sadly, the lack of compensation in our district is reflected in our teacher retention as it compares to the state level. Our newly hired teachers' retention rate is fifty percent less than the statewide rate. As for our amazing policies and practices, these also need to be supported. Right now, there is a lot of outside pressure to change our public education and best practices to make learning experiences less diverse, less inclusive, less based on 21st century skills, and ultimately, less safe. Teachers and students need to know our community, district and board will stand strong on human rights. The overwhelming majority of our community believes in a strong public education that supports our teachers and an excellent education for all of our students, no matter where they are from or who they are.
Thank you, Amy. Susan Eastep and on deck, Sarah Fabian.
I told you I'd be on the other side. Wow, this is really tall. Okay. I would like to speak to you tonight about the executive orders that have come from the top since January. These EOs, specific to public education, are direct attacks on diversity, equity and inclusion, and especially target students and educators based on gender, sexual orientation, race, and whether or not someone has documentation. Michigan State Superintendent Michael Rice has released multiple memos which were sent directly to all stu-, all school superintendents across the state. And I highly, highly encourage all board members to read these memos. There have been strong responses that have come out across the state and across the country against complying with these executive orders as they do not have legal standing. Additionally, lawsuits have been filed specifically for the diversity, equity and inclusion, including from the NEA, ACLU, and the AFT. The biggest takeaway from these superintendent memos is that protections continue to exist and the state is prepared to defend our students and staff. Michigan Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act provides civil rights protections to education and education based on religion, race, color, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, and gender identity or expression. The district has a legal obligation to not comply with these executive orders. Regarding the transgender and non-binary students policy that was discussed tonight at the policy meeting, this is an example of pulling that specific policy and saying, we're going to remove Title IX from that when, again, an executive order is not actual law. It's, it's really, you know, this new administration interpretation. So moving quickly to do that specifically for that policy concerns me, especially when we have anti-discrimination laws and policies. Is that going to change now? Are we going to take out, because it says sex, sexual orientation and, just nerve-wracking, sexual orientation and gender identity? Is that going to change now? That was our question before and legal said, don't mess with the policy. Also, our three-year DEI plans have been removed from the DEI website. This is another example of complying. And I think that's unfortunate because in 2020, we had the community come together and, you know, talk about the racist incidents, the Snapchat and an individual who attacked one of our community members. We worked around that and came up with, you know, the three-year plan and we've updated that. That costs money for the district. And so simply removing that or changing names and titles to hide that we do DEI is not, it, it's not what we should be, be spending our time on. Again, there are legal protections at the state level.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Sarah Fabian and on deck is, oh, is Eric John Roberts here? There you are. Didn't recognize you with the mask. Sorry.
Okay. My name's Sarah Fabian and I'm a parent of two elementary-age kids in Celine schools and I wanted to comment about two things tonight. First, I want to echo the comments made by SCA President Bridget Corey at the last school board meeting. Celine teachers are truly the heart of our district and they're the people who make our schools exceptional rather than just good. I have one kid in fourth grade and one kid in first and every teacher they've had has been incredible and I truly mean this. In one of my roles as a faculty member at EMU, I serve as the Secretary of the EMU AAUP, which is EMU's main faculty union. And we also negotiated a contract a few years ago that went to mediation. You may have heard about this in the news as we also went on strike. I share all of this just to explain that I know enough about how these things work to know that none of you sitting before me on the board are the individuals that are at the table during these negotiations. But I also know that it's your duty as our elected officials to represent stakeholder values. And what I would like to be clear about communicating tonight is that our teachers deserve to be fairly compensated for the exceptional rather than just good work that they do. They have earned this. It's what they deserve. It's what we as parents value the most about our district. The other related thing that I'd like to make a comment about is about another aspect of our district that makes it so amazing. And that is its commitment, at least during the time when my kids have been old enough to be in Celine schools, to efforts in making our schools more diverse, equitable and inclusive. This is a value held by our district that from my experience, our educators and administrators have done a great job of going beyond just giving lip service to. I realize that public schools across our nation are facing real threats when it comes to these values and I just want to ask that you all do your best to continue to fight to uphold these values as they make our schools better for all students. Not only would I ask that you uphold these values, but that you communicate to families that this is your intention. Communication about this goes a long way, especially when things seem so uncertain and frankly frightening. Please continue to protect and support the most marginalized of our kids. They need it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Eric.
And on deck is Libby Williams.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Eric John Roberts and I'm here tonight to share my candidacy for the Washtenaw Intermediate School District Board of Education. This election is decided by local school board members in May of odd years, so you'll have this decision before you at your May thirteenth meeting, along with the other eight school districts that make up Washtenaw ISD. Some about me. I used to be a school board member for six years for Kennewah Hills Public Schools, which is around the size of Celine, about three thousand students outside of Grand Rapids, before I moved to this area to attend law school and purchased a home here. In that time, I spent more than two thousand hours learning how to be the best school board member I could be, the best advocate for kids I could be. And that included presenting at two MASB conferences, one on sexual education advisory boards and how to structure those for school board members. And the other on, we worked on expanding the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act. I authored the, the resolution at my school district that was adopted by MASB to expand the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act because we know that if our students face discrimination, then they're not likely to stay in the state of Michigan. They're unlikely to contribute to the state of Michigan. And we want to keep the, the talent that, that you all are working to produce, that school board members across the state are working to, to build in, in our students. On and off, for about four years, I've been a substitute teacher, including at the Washtenaw ISD and Ann Arbor Public Schools. And I did that. Now I'm a law student at the University of Toledo. I knew I wanted to try substitute teaching while I was, first while I was a school board member, and then continuing on in my graduate education because I wanted to best understand how accommodations play out in classrooms and what supports that teachers needed and how that might give me different insights as a board member. I bring all these things to the table. I think I'd make an excellent addition to the Washtenaw ISD school board because of those experiences. And, and I will say also, I'm here before you to, to get to know you. I've got information about me that I will point out, has a Calendly link with my full availability from now till May. I'd love to sit down with each and every one of you to discuss collaborations with the ISD, to discuss what's, what's going on in your local district and to be a resource. I also, in January, presented to about thirty new and returning school board members on how to, on the Open Meetings Act to make sure that they're fully compliant. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. We'll just leave him at the far end of the table. Thanks. Libby Williams.
First, I would like to voice my support also for the Celine teachers. They are absolutely excellent. They're the reason we moved here. My daughter is transitioning from third grade to fourth grade next year, which is a little sad, but I absolutely love all of the teachers and I'm going to greatly miss that she is in Woodland Meadows. They are amazing. The term whole child was used by several board members tonight in regards to the importance of the priorities in Celine area schools. I agree wholeheartedly, which is why the lack of the word inclusive anywhere in the long laundry list of qualifications is concerning, especially since the prior job listing did specifically list inclusive use and sensitivity as a priority. This community is proudly inclusive, as it, as is its goals. It is of the utmost important to have this component specified when seeking a superintendent. Inclusion is, is a vital element to the whole child education and academic excellence. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Libby. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on April eighth at six thirty. I'd like to entertain a motion to enter the closed session at ten fifteen with the intent to reopen, I'm going to say optimistically, eleven o'clock. Or, well, time change midnight, so. For the purpose of the following, for a school board to consider security planning and to address existing threats and prevent potential threats to the safety of students under Section 8K. Joining us for that will be Dan Carrick, Superintendent Evaluation under Section 8A. Discussion, Discuss Matters Under Attorney Claim Privilege that are exempt from disclosure pursuant to state and federal law, that's 8H. Carol Diglio will join us for that. And under Sections 8H, 8N, A, and K, a two-thirds roll call vote is required, so I'm going to run down the list. I'm going to start the opposite end this time. Tzizitas. Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Steben?
Yes.
McVeigh, yes. Gold? I'm alphabetical. Starting to wise up here. Gerbi? Berwick? I hear no. Austin?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much. We're into closed session. We're going to actually kind of start it in about five minutes so everyone can get seated properly. Thank you. We're going to actually kind of start it in about five minutes so everyone can get seated properly. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. There's no action, so I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting on March 11th, 2025. Oh, sorry. Yeah, 2025 at 12:21 a.m.